Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. And this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for March 2, 2021. As you know, these meetings have been held remote because of the pandemic. And we're using the Zoom platform. The meetings are being videotaped and the videotapes will become public records. So if you're speaking to the Select Board and you don't want to make your image a public record for all time, you can just turn off your video and we'll listen to your audio remarks. Let's start off with an announcement. That one of the activities of the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee was a discussion of a new film called MLK FBI about the surveillance and other behavior, bad behavior of the FBI with respect to Martin Luther King. The movie, the committee also put on a discussion with the, with the director of the movie, Sam Pollard, a fairly well-known filmmaker, and Nika Elagardo, one of our congressional representatives, and I was a moderator of the discussion of the movie, which I thought was pretty interesting discussion. But anyway, it's, it's, it's available on the website of the MLK Celebration Committee if people are interested in, in watching. And I would really urge you, if you're interested in what really horrible things the FBI did to try to undermine Martin Luther King. I'd look up the movie MLK FBI. It's available on Amazon and I think some other sites. So with that, any other announcements or updates, Ms. Heller? I'm sorry. I'm going to start calling you Nancy.
Okay, you can call me anything you want. So I actually watched the discussion of the film with Bernard as the questioner moderator and Sam Pollard and Mika Elagardo, who is our state rep for part of Brookline, mostly for Jamaica Plain, I think. But anyway, it was very, very interesting. I thought everybody did a really good job. I've never seen the film in total. I saw a piece of it. And, you know, I do, as a young person, have memories of how awful J. Edgar Hoover was. So I'm eager to get a chance to see the whole thing. And I urge people to do that because this is the kind of person we want to avoid in our government. He was really, really awful. And Martin Luther King suffered a lot, I think, because of him. But he seemed to rise above it and became the terrific figure that he was. So, you know, he was a person with faults, as we all are. But I thought it was, I thought it was very well done. And Sam Pollard is a very interesting and well-spoken guy. So I urge everybody to see it. The other thing I want to say is that, as you all know, I was appointed Chair of the Center Street Zoning Committee, which was a committee to look at the project for Hebrew Senior Life, who was proposing to build two structures on the block that it owns between Williams and Fuller on Center Street. And they made, we had our first public meeting at the beginning of February. They made, the architects made a presentation. And after that time, Hebrew Senior Life has been rethinking their project. They believe it was really too complicated for, and too much for them to take on at this time. They would not have made the Maytown meeting, which was somewhat important to them because the tax credits for the affordable housing, the opportunity is to get your application in and be awarded those tax credits in October. So then they would have had to figure out how to maneuver and, and may perhaps make November Town Meeting with this project. But we couldn't guarantee that. So they decided in the end to, to go for a, just one building that they're going to do at 108 Center. It's going to be a friendly 40B in the sense that it will be 100% affordable. They're hoping to have a senior center expansion as part of the project. And there would be six stories, which is what they had proposed before. And they will make every effort to pay attention to certain things like, I believe setbacks, et cetera. So they're calling, they're calling it a friendly 40B as a result. And they're hoping to work cooperatively with the town as Two Life did to, to build this important, 100% affordable project. So I wanted you all to know Center Street's zoning committee is no more. There was no necessity for having it, given that we're not going for, we don't need a zoning, they don't need a zoning change.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Very important information. Any other updates or announcements?
I don't know.
Pardon me?
I, I have one. I didn't know if others wanted to, go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
So this is a recognition. First of all, it's a recognition of a reporter, Jenna Fisher, who's very good and reports for the Brookline tab. But she did a terrific job of writing up the story of a Brookline rabbi. And this rabbi is named Danny Esco, D.A.N.I. She came up with a project, which is explained in the, in the article. Essentially, because through her husband, who had grandparents who were Holocaust survivors, she's been very aware of the presence of Holocaust survivors in Greater Boston. And, and she made it her mission to make sure that they got COVID vaccines. So within 24 hours of her, sort of making it known that she would assist Holocaust survivors in getting COVID vaccines, she had 14 of them sign up. And she's had more since then. And she got help from Temple Cahill of Israel, which is wonderful. And for those who are, who are wondering, you know, how many Holocaust survivors are still in Massachusetts, this article explains that as well. 4,000, 4,000 in Massachusetts, the youngest of whom are in their 80s. So, you know, let's just be thankful that we have people like Danny Esco, Rabbi Danny Esco, in our community. And I thank Jenna very much for a terrific write-up of this story.
Isn't Jenna with a patch these days?
Did I say? I thought I said patch, but if I said, said it wrong, I said it wrong. It's the patch. It is the patch. Thank you. Yeah.
And by the way, 4,000 survivors of the Holocaust and what they went through and that they have lived so long is quite an amazing accomplishment on their part. And really something that is quite a, a blessing, if you want to use that word, to the community. Because they made contributions in the time that they have been here, despite that, the history that they had to go through. Heather, did you have a question or an update or announcement?
I did. John actually just reminded me that I, I'm on a listserv for the Women's Commission of Brookline. And they are accepting nominations for Brookline Women of the Year. They're taking, they're hoping to honor multiple women instead of just the one that they have done in the past. So for the nomination form or the criteria, I would urge those who have Rebecca Stone's contact information to get in touch with her. If you need any information, I'm sure it's on the town's website for the commission. Or you can contact me. My information is on the town website and I can point you in the right direction. I read off the, the website, but it's a bunch of jargon.
Any other? Hey, let me add to John's announcement. At the MLK event this year, which was remote and is also available on the MLK website or webpage. You know, I quoted from Andrew Johns, I'm sorry, Ange. What's his name? Mr. Andrew. Anyway, I quoted from him, who said that the, the lions of the civil rights movement lived to be ripe old ages. Even John Lewis, who died recently of, of cancer, lived to be into his 80s. And last year, we lost C.T. Vivian, one of King's leading lieutenants. We lost a number of other people who are in their 90s. And what Andrew Young, excuse me, what Andrew Young said is that what, what we can attribute the longevity of these struggle fighters for civil rights who went through so much was the fact that they never allowed hatred to dominate their thinking, dominate their lives. And because they responded to hate with love throughout their lives, not just during the civil rights period. Andrew Young thought that that was the reason why they've lived such long lives. I don't know what the scientific basis of that is, but I think that there must be something similar to the longevity of the 4,000 Holocaust survivors here in Massachusetts. Just, just an observation. Okay. Any, anything else? No? Let's see. Next, public comment. Heather, take over.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for those of us, those of you joining us for public comment. We are all volunteer elected officials who serve out of, out of a sense of duty to this community. And we do our best to represent as many different points of view that are in this community as possible. We have a few rules I'd like to share. Each person speaking is limited to three minutes. Please refrain from personal attacks or from addressing personnel issues during this period. You are welcome to send the Select Board members an email expressing your thoughts in more detail. If a speaker has reached the three-minute limit or violates other expectations, I will ask the other board members if there are any objections before instructing Devin to mute the speaker. Let's begin.
The first person signed up for public comment is Janice Khan. Janice, you can unmute and when you're ready, your three minutes will begin.
Okay. Hi, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Janice Khan. I'm a town meeting member and a member of the Advisory Committee, where I have served for many years as Chair of the Public Safety Subcommittee. I have also been serving as a resource for the Policing Reforms Committee. As one who volunteers a considerable amount of time to the town, I appreciate the time that all of those who have served on the two Select Board Committees have devoted to the task of both reforming and reimagining community policing in Brookline. I have also been following the work of the Newton Police Reform Task Force and want to address my comments to a guiding recommendation of that task force, which is to shift police officers from a warrior mentality to a guardian mentality. And then how it applies in Brookline. That concept comes from President Obama's 21st Century Policing Reform Task Force that was established after the brutal 2014 killing of Michael Brown in Ferguson, Missouri. The report noted right at the beginning that a guardian mindset helps to build public trust. Obama's task force offered strategies for achieving that mindset, such as when making department policies available for public review, posting on the department's website data on stops, arrests, crime, et cetera, aggregated by demographics. In other words, transparency. Creating opportunities for interactions with members of the community that are positive and not related to investigation or enforcement. And three, striving to create a broadly diverse workforce. Brookline has worked hard on all three areas. For example, transparency by posting detailed statistics of the year-end report on the police department's website. Opportunities for positive interactions with residents of the Brookline Housing Authority communities by creating the Walk and Talk Program and recruiting an increasingly more diverse workforce. All of these efforts were started well before Obama's task force released its report in 2015. In Brookline, over the past 20 years, our community has asked the police department to take on more and more responsibilities, which has led to partnering with many agencies, both within and outside of Brookline, to help residents 24/7 in need of a range of services. As a result, the department is now woven into the fabric of the social safety net of the town. The benefit of those interconnections, I feel, is that we have already made great progress towards developing the police department's guardian role, while communities all across the country are just beginning to take steps to move in that direction.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. My concern is that if we choose to pull the department out of their supportive helping roles, our community will be left with uniformed officers solely engaged in the enforcement of regulations and laws, setting the stage for only negative police community interactions. We would be undoing all of the work of the past two decades and sending the department back to a warrior mindset. And I can't think of a worse outcome of this process of self-examination. I hope that the discussions that these reports stimulate will continue to address ways of moving our police department forward on the guardian path that is already well underway in Brookline. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Jonathan Mandi. Jonathan, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your time will begin when you're ready. Jonathan, I think you just want to take a look at your audio connection. If you click the little arrow next to the microphone, I just want to make sure that you're using the same either headphones or the built-in microphone.
We can come back to him.
The next person signed up for public comment is Addie Agnussee. Addie, you've been promoted to a panelist. And you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your time will begin. Addie, you've been promoted to a panelist. When you're ready, you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your time will begin. Looks like Addie might be having some technical trouble. Jonathan, do you want to give Addie a try again?
Yeah, how about that? Can you hear me?
Perfect.
Excellent. So thank you for having me. On May 25th, so I'm Jonathan. I was serving on the Committee on Policing Reform for some time. On May 25th, 2020, we all watched as Officer Derek Chauvin slowly murdered George Floyd by kneeling on his neck in 8 minutes and 46 seconds. Like many of you, I was filled with deep anger. But I couldn't go out and protest yet because both of my parents at the time were fighting for their lives at the hospital after having contracted the coronavirus. As the summer went on, an opportunity to serve appeared. And then I subsequently applied to the Reimagine Committee. But I was placed in the Committee on Police Reform and I was very happy to be on that Reform Committee. As a member of the Reform Committee, I witnessed the Select Board Chair mark the chokehold, then Rush the Ben, as in the chokehold Ben, as a quote, "easy win" for his own political gain. He refused to have the full committee hear from complainants, citing that they were not vetted, quote, "vetted", and not sure if their stories are, quote, "reliable". Mr. Green consistently interrupted and disrespected me and Raj when we voiced our concerns about the process. But he allowed Michael Kivney and Casey Hatchett to spew lies that led to death threats against Mr. Fernandez. In closing, Chair Green instructed Reform Committee members to place certain items at the back of the report, quote, "in order to make it harder for some people to say this is just PR for the police". The credibility of the Reform Committee report is flawed. Therefore, in the words of Abe Lincoln, "with malice towards none, I am pleased to announce my endorsement to Miriam Ashkenazi, a Select Board Member." Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Addie Agnussee. Addie, if you want to give unmuting a try and sharing your video, your time will begin when you're ready.
I mean, if you guys don't mind, if somebody else could go before me. I just listened to Brother Jonathan. I need a guy to myself real quick. Because if somebody else could go before me, I'll speak after that. Thank you.
We can certainly do that.
The next person signed up for public comment is Deborah Brown. Deborah, you've been promoted and when you're ready, your time will begin.
My name is Deborah Brown. I'm a town meeting member of Precinct One. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to make comments on a couple of things, but I would like this presentation to be made part of the administrative record. I want to raise two concerns. One is that Select Board managed to spend $70,000 for, for a consultant attorney, Natasha Tidwell, to review the town's approach to litigation involving Gerald Alston. I asked for the report or the outcome of that work and was told that nothing exists. I, I think you owe the taxpayers of Brookline some response. That was a lot of money. I'd like to know what happened to it. So thank you very much on that. The second point is I would like to discuss the, the Police Reform Committee's work product. I know you all invested a great deal of time and energy in, in this endeavor, but that's not the test. What you produce is how you should measure the quality of your work. So, you know, Jonathan talked about the chokehold that Mr. Green used at one of the hearings. And that was actually my introduction to the Reform Committee. I don't think the committee ever recovered from that. And, and with that kind of leadership, it just calls into question the whole process. The other thing I want to point out is that the recommendations that the Reform Committee makes, you know, add up to somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 FTE. Third, a lot of what I read in the recommendations comes right out of August Volmer. You know, he was the grandfather of police reform. He died in 1932. He died in 1932. And so, you know, one of the key things that he talked about, but that I didn't really see a lot of emphasis on in this reformer report, is an ability to delve into the causes behind the acts, illegal acts, in order to solve the issue. Instead of just, you know, arresting people or pulling them over. I think that instead, they should have spent more time working on why there is such a fundamental lack of trust of the police department. I don't think that work was really done. I don't think that work was really done. To build trust, there must be consequences and the public must trust the information.
You have thirty seconds.
Whoa, okay, I'm going to speed it up. So police can't investigate themselves. There has to be improved data collection and reporting practices to expose interactions with law enforcement as a tool to accountability. Racial disparities have to be explored in all aspects of policing. Again, the report does a poor job of doing that. I think that there was a real missed opportunity in laying out how, you know, the walk and talk program or the school program is any different than the broken windows policing policy. I mean, and that's just a way of, you know, some of the reports call it social change.
You've reached three minutes.
I'll just conclude very quickly. What we have to do is reduce our reliance on policing in our communities. We, and more importantly, if you're going to have the police, you have to make sure that they are used in a role that not only protects some, but protects all, and more importantly, doesn't leave a large segment of this community afraid, afraid. So thank you very much.
The next person signed up for a public comment is Addie Agnussee. You are promoted to a panelist and when you unmute, your time will begin.
Can you guys, Ellen?
Yes.
At this point, my name is Reddavon. Just a Brookline resident and I'm trying to separate as a young black man listening to another black man sharing the same experience with same individual. You try to separate the emotions from me, then try to be constructive. So I'll try my best, yeah. In regards to, I was watching the Reform Committee and similar statement of the feels the same with what Jonathan said, same thing with Raj in regards to Bernard, no personal attack on you. And that kind of leads to the, when I look at their Reform Committee, something is very budging about the makeup of your committee. Right? You have the people of color in that committee having a problem with their recommendation and the way they are being treated within the committee. And that's something in itself, because I have a lot of people in our community in this meeting watching today. So I just, I just hope the people listening should should put that into consideration just to look at the Reform Committee itself and before taking their recommendation, how they treat their own people within the committee. Live testimonies that they and like Raoul always say, watch the tapes, huh? It's there for the record. So, and that brings me to what Deborah was saying, that the report, the reform report, using twenty people of color in data, seven black people as your as your yardstick in Brookline with twenty, about twenty-three percent people of color as your yardstick, twenty people as your data, as well as the nineteen eighty whatever report when I was a baby that as hold as their report updated in nineteen eight. I couldn't get past that page. It's very baffling and it's very concerning. It's a personal color. I just want to express concern that the old makeup of whatever their report you guys come up with, it's not constructive at all. And just that the way you guys treat people, man, people of color is very noticeable. Especially you've been, I had no personal attack, but it just seemed to, the person endorsed by the police. The person of color, but I'll leave it at that. I just can't get past that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Devin? At this time, there are thirty three attendees and no one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Great. Turn it back over to you, Chair Green.
Thank you. Next, question of approving the meeting minutes of February sixteen and February twenty third, two thousand and twenty one. Does anyone have any comments to those minutes or?
I'm sorry. I apologize. I don't know why I hit the camera. I do not have a comment on the minutes and I didn't move quickly enough to indicate that I was I really wanted to be recognized at the end of the public comment period. Because I think that the statement of our ground rules for public comment is quite appropriate. And yet I find that week after week, people appear during the public comment period and show no indication of respect for the ground rules that have been laid down. And I don't know what we can do about it. If we try to do anything about it, we get accused of trying to suppress critics or suppress speech. But I think one of the fundamentals of simple courtesy should be that people do not use our public comment period to smear individuals who are not here to defend themselves. And when I hear two of our officers of the Brookline Police Department accused of spewing lies, and that was the phrase used, and they're not here, I have to ask the individual who would say that, do you not feel that you owe it to them at least to to contain your comments to something that is to a point to an issue without characterizing them as spewing lies when they're not even here to defend their reputations? You know, it disappoints me. It just disappoints me time and time again. And, you know, people seem to think this public comment period is licensed to take aim at people's reputations when they're not even here to defend themselves. And I think we're better than that. I think the people who come before us should be better than that. And I wish that we could do something about it without seeming to shut them down. I don't want to shut anybody down, but I do want people to exercise a little bit of restraint and treat each other with a little bit of respect. And it makes me feel as though, you know, we as the Select Board are allowing things to happen here that simply, you know, go beyond the bounds of decency. And I have to say it, you know, and I've said it, so I'll be quiet now that I've said it.
Hey. That was in your second segment of the meeting, Heather, not mine. Okay.
Criticizing Heather. I wouldn't want to be the one holding the gavel. I frankly don't know what we do.
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll just say this, you know, I did try to come up with some ground rules. It will be very difficult for me to assess what crosses a line into personal attacks. I'm doing my best to err on the side of free speech because I really believe in it. And I believe that that is what the public comment period is intended for. I don't necessarily agree with the statements that you've just said, John. I think we're all adults and sometimes it's really hard to hear how our words are perceived by others. And so I'm just going to try to listen to all viewpoints and, you know, we can only do our best to to just try to listen as much as possible.
Thank you. And by the way, never be upset that people attack me. My mother said many, many years ago, Bernard, do us right, what you think is right, and don't worry about what people say about you. So don't try to stop anyone from attacking me or whatever. So anyway, let's get back to the minutes, minutes of February sixteen and February twenty third. I move approval. All in favor? Nancy?
Hi.
Heather?
Hi.
Raoul?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And Bernard, both eye. Okay, next.
Bernard, could I interrupt for one minute? I'm thinking about this issue and I just want to say one other thing, add to what John has said, and that is that you know, I've been involved in Brookline politics for many years, both on the school committee and on the Select Board. I have to say that since the former president, I don't even want to name him, has came to office, I think I've seen more disrespect and incivility in our politics than I had noticed before. Maybe our mores are changing and it's societal. I hope not. I hope that this president, President Biden, will set a different tone and that people all over the country, including in Brookline, will understand what it means to be respectful. You can criticize certainly, but do it in a respectful non, a way that doesn't attack people on a personal level. So I just, I just have to say that because I've been feeling it for some time now. And, you know, I'm hoping we will get back to a level of respect that we had in the past. That's it.
Okay, I think everyone voted yes on the minutes except me, so I vote yes also. Moving along, we have three items, three B through three D that I'd like to take in, I'd like to take them together in omnibus fashion. They are the exception acceptance of a donation to the fire department from the Korean Church of Boston for five hundred dollars and one hundred dollars for a Brookline resident, Judith R. Sebeski. Approval contract with CTA Construction Managers for the third floor and Tap and Gym renovation of the Brookline High School Expansion Project. That's a seven million eight hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty dollar project. And finally, question of approving the authorization to hire request for a senior maintenance craftsperson carpenter in the Public Buildings Division of the Buildings Department. So I move approval of those three items. All in favor, Nancy?
Yes.
Heather?
Hi.
Raoul?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I vote I also. Next, COVID nineteen update. Mr. Klugner and Dr. Jett, talk to us.
Yes, thank you. Let me make some introductory comments and turn it over to Dr. Jett. As you undoubtedly are aware, the governor announced some changes to the state reopening plan. Earlier this week on March first, a number of establishments had their capacity limits increased to fifty percent. In the cases of restaurants, capacity limits are eliminated altogether, although there continues to be safe distancing and other requirements for patrons of restaurants. On March twenty second, the governor is recommending, assuming that the metrics in case cases continue to trend the way they are, that we would be entering into phase four or the final phase of the state reopening plan. In this case, the most obvious ones that have been heard about were our venues for large sporting events or concerts, more regional, regional venues, but also special events, weddings and parties and other events at that point could be, had their capacity increased to one hundred, hundred persons indoors and one hundred and fifty persons outdoors. That does not include private residences, however. So, you know, clearly I think many of us were surprised at the news and at the at the timing of that, given, given many of the problems with vaccinations and variants and other, other things, but as I think we've faced many times throughout this pandemic, it's very difficult to go against a statewide plan and go on your own. It really does very difficult to communicate that effectively and quite honestly, you know, it doesn't really matter if you have your residents going to your neighboring community and experiencing other rules. So I'm not recommending that we do modify or hold back on on the governor's plan, but I will note that it was surprising, frankly. On the vaccine rollout, just to mention that supply continues to be the biggest problem. And supply is driving the state's policies around max, mass vaccination sites as opposed to smaller locally driven sites. And so I think we've talked about this before, we don't expect to be distributor of vaccines in any meaningful manner until later on in the phases when supply becomes more plentiful. And I think we're all very encouraged by the new vaccine, Johnson and Johnson vaccine that will be rolled out soon. And then finally, I did want to mention that something I mentioned last week, we are really reaching the end of our testing site. As you know, in December, we opened a municipally operated testing, COVID testing site and have been providing convenient access to testing and rapid testing results for several months now, for a few months. Unfortunately, we're running out of money. We had initially allocated two hundred thousand dollars worth of our CARES money. Probably by the end of this week, we'll be closer to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But the important thing to know is that we're, the demand for testing has really plummeted. And so I believe our lowest was about thirty tests per day, whereas we were ranging in the high, you know, mid two hundreds for a period of time. And the way that the the contract to manage this testing site is, is the lower the numbers of tests, the higher the costs, per day costs. So it's becoming very cost effective to do that and we're seriously considering wrapping up that site, making sure that there are sufficient places to get testing in the private market. I know there are in Brookline and others in the region, but I wish we could hope, open this site longer, but it's appearing very difficult to do that. I think Dr. Jett will probably want to address that a little bit, but I wanted to turn it over to him for for his review of stats and projections and any other comments he wishes to make.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Swanee Jett, Health Commissioner of Brookline. So today I'm going to cover some of those things that Mr. Klugner mentioned and then give you an update, we'll give you an update where we at first. This is our cases, positive cases, since the start of COVID, cases seem to be declining overall. So we did hit a okay, all right. Okay. So we did hit a low week before last when we dropped down to twenty cases. But this past week, we actually increased to fifty. Can't really tell us that indicative of anything. But I'm sure we'll see as, you know, we move in a direction with business open, I expect this number to go up. Testing. So Mr. Klugner mentioned, you know, our number of tests and how we have done during the pandemic. And from the twenty third of November to the twenty eighth of November, just in a five day period, we did eight hundred and sixty seven tests at the empty site. The next biggest jump was the twenty first through the twenty sixth of December, where we had nine hundred and fifty-six tests done. As of last week, we only had three hundred and thirty-one tests done. Over the last two week period, we actually only had six hundred and forty-five tests that were done. So if you can look at this in this simple numbers fashion, we only achieve in a third of the testing that is necessary to town. And this is not indicative of just empathy site, the same is happening at all testing sites. So it causes a lot of concern. This is the amount of positive tests compared to the tests provided. So our number right now for the empty site is around about six percent positivity, which might seem a little high, but it's not compared to other times when we did a lot of testing. Vaccinations. So last Thursday, we did a hundred and seven vaccines at town hall. We did a hundred and three vaccines at town hall. To date, we have done nine hundred and ninety-seven out of a thousand doses that we received. And that's because three of the vows only had nine doses in them. Right now, we are slated to do vaccination for BHA starting next Thursday, or starting this Thursday. We're starting this Thursday, hopefully, um, the doses do come in. Um, I haven't seen it yet, but I know Wednesday is the drop dead deadline. But we were approved for 500 first doses, and so. And before I close, a couple of things I just want to make a note, and, and then I'll open to any questions. We did recently bring in the news, so Dr. Rudjko Rudich, who worked for the town for 52 years. Um, as retired, we're still trying to figure out a, a feasible way to do some type of celebration for her. We did sort of a mini celebration for Barbara Wesley, who retired. So we're still working on that. As soon as we have the information, we'll let you know. Um, we have hired Dr. Peter Moyer, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, as the Medical Director for Brookline Health Department. Um, his last role was Medical Director for Boston EMS Fire Police. He has MD from Columbia University, has some Masters of Public Health from BU. Oh, and he has a BA from Harvard. Um, so I want everybody to welcome him. He's also on the ACPH Board. Um, and he has done a lot with sister cities in the past, and that's when I first met Dr. Moyer. Another position we have finally filled, if um, Pat Mullins' position, we had Assistant Director Roland Lanker. He comes to us from DuPage County, where he was the Environmental Health Santarion there. And then he was the um, Environmental Assistant Director for Cook County Sheriff's Department. And he ran Environmental Services for them. And he was um, heavily oversaw infection control um, for the Justice for Sheriff Department. He has a BS for SIU, MS for Walden, and he's working on his, he's a public health um, degree doctorate. Uh, he's a public, he's a PhD candidate right now. So that is all of my updates. Uh, open up any questions about my hand.
Well, congratulations on uh, having been able to fill those positions. That's terrific. And I know that it'll uh, mean a uh, a better and more extensive work uh, product from the Health Department, which I'm sure you welcome, uh, because you've been so, so uh, overburdened, really. Uh, but I want to um, want to focus on the 500 doses. Um, because today at the Age Friendly Cities Committee meeting, we were talking about the fact that there, there's real concern about homebound seniors. People who can't get out, who are mostly in their 80s and 90s, who really should have the vaccine. And we're wondering whether there's a way we can make that happen. Do we need? You know, they're, they're talking about uh, uh, doing a survey of homebound seniors. I'm wondering if you have any data about that, how many there are. Uh, and do you have any kind of plans to use some of those 500 doses for the people who are homebound and cannot get out?
So these doses, in particular, when we made the request was, were for people that were in senior housing and um, age restricted. Um, we have been tabling the list for people that are homebound. Most of um, my public health nurse, even though she's retired, she's still working. Um, most people have already called her.
That sounds like Barbara, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. So they have called, they have called her. And so we have tabbed the list. We're actually waiting for the governor to release a plan on how to address homebound. But that is on our list to make sure we tackle that. Uh, I think our biggest issue is, you know, we don't have a vaccine. If we did, our list is small enough that we can, we have already talked about logistically how to make it happen.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, any other questions? None?
Oh, I, I will say one other thing.
Okay.
Um, I think that um, I, I saw a program uh, in the past couple of days with uh, Dr. Walensky of the CDC and uh, Dr. Fauci. We're talking about the fact that all over the country, um, governors are opening up restaurants and other uh, you know, gyms and other kinds of activities. And apparently, the problem is, is that the curve of the uh, of disease has gone up like that and come down, but it hasn't come down far enough. It's still, and now it's plateaued at a rather high level. And so I'm wondering how you connect that to Brookline and whether we're also in that situation where the level is higher than um, than they would, you know, people, it's, it's, the public health people would like in terms of opening things up.
Well, I think, you know, anytime we move to open and there's not enough vaccine and supply, and everybody hasn't been vaccinated, um, we're in danger of another surge. And in fact, you know, I predict we will see surges. It'd be very episodic. But I believe we'll see them around, you know, people vacationing. As you can see, we had a lot more positive tests, um, and a lot more testing going on around holidays. So, you know, with vacations coming up, um, that probably our saving grace is to get to June or July in this area. And I think that will bode well. But my other supposition is that, you know, we only by our numbers, we only know how many people actually got a test. So it's probably a lot more people that have had COVID than we know. So the, the spread of COVID in the overall community, we might reach herd immunity by the fall. But it seems like this disease is something that's going to be with us for a while, so um, it might ever flow depending on the season, which means you would have to constantly get another vaccine. So I don't think, I, I think, you know, moving forward in the future, this will just be the new norm.
Okay, Raoul?
Thank you. Um, well, actually, I'll, I'll give you an opportunity, Dr. Jet. There was a, a question in the chat. If you can clarify, um, Dr. Moyer's role in um, in the administration there?
Yeah, Peter, Peter Morris wrote, is um, Medical Director. He signs all, all of our standing orders. And it's similar to what the school department has, um, and Dr. uh, Lizwick. They have a medical director as well. And so in order for us to provide vaccines of any kind in the community, you have to have a medical director on staff, on contract.
And, and just to be clear, that, that disposition is not a full-time position under any circumstances. This was the role that Dr. Gloria Rudish had served for many years. It's very much of a part-time, but we do need a medical, uh, medical doctor to uh, to provide some of the required programs of, of the department.
Yeah, so here, and, and to clarify, we, this position has always been um, stipend-based, more volunteer than salary.
Well, Dr. Jet, well, well, Dr. Moyer, I don't know if he still is, but I, but I saw him listed as, as being part of the Advisory Council on, on uh, on public health. Will, will he still serve in that capacity too, or?
Yes. So usually, uh, what has, what has happened in the past, you know, medical director usually came from the Board of Health, that they served on Advisory Council.
All right. And a Board of Health, is that something we have here? I don't think so. Yeah.
We have an advisory or council on public health, on advice of the select board.
Yeah. You know, I was going to ask you some, some things about, about, about teachers and, and I think, I think the, the questions I have, your, your answers might just be speculation, uh, as many of us are, are, you know, watching, uh, you know, the, what's happening at the state level as well as at the national level. Biden, uh, President Biden, uh, sort of um, challenging states today to put um, shots in arms of teachers by the end of this month. Um, and the state, um, not, not yet, um, committing to, to adding teachers to, to priority list. And um, so I, I, I would just, it's unclear to me, and, and maybe you too, um, to what extent, if, if the state does um, sort of take these steps, and maybe it's just something we have to just keep, keep an eye on, uh, is, is what our role will be as, as, as a town, our responsibility might be either through, um, through your department or in some other way, um, to participate in this effort. Um, or if these are, if these, you know, if uh, folks are just going to go um, directly to sort of the mass vaccination, vaccination sites that are out there, but.
So we have requested, um, we did put in the letter, myself and members of school administration, to be a regional hub in order to vaccinate, um, teachers. So we haven't received a response yet, but you know, I think that's something that's very plausible. In order to open schools fully, um, I know the teachers union is worried about safety, um, as well as, you know, teachers in schools. So I, I think that's a, a very good step to make sure everybody's vaccinated to avoid that concern.
All right, thank you.
Heather?
So.
Actually, he, um, Raoul stole my thunder. I was going to ask the question and like Q and A.
Okay. Yes. Dr. Jet, what you're saying?
No, I was just saying, you know, I appreciate the time, everybody have a good night.
Oh, we're not finished yet?
Oh, not finished yet?
John?
Uh, good evening, Dr. Jet. It's, it's always good to see you. Um, uh, you, you were one of the first to advocate masks. Um, I, I can't help but observed that it was just about a year ago, um, this week, that people really began to register the seriousness of COVID. Uh, I, I remember it very well because I had to cancel an event, um, that was planned, uh, because of COVID. And on a Monday, it seemed like maybe an excessive re- reaction to COVID. And by Friday, everybody understood why the event had been canceled. It, it sort of happened that fast within the space of a week. And I, I, I heard that Dr. Fauci was quoted today as saying that he thinks people might still be wearing masks in 2022. Uh, you know, not, not to question whether there'll be herd immunity maybe by the fall. But what are your thoughts on whether mask wearing has become something that perhaps we should get used to on a, you know, beyond, beyond the end of this year even, um, as a public health measure?
So that's a good, that's a good question. So what I have noticed overseas in the colder months that normally flew with ravished countries, they noticed that by wearing a mask, that there were fewer deaths and there was fewer spread of flu, influenza. So you, you know, we've always, um, I, I would say not really taken that measure of wearing masks, but you see it a lot in China and other places overseas in Asia. I actually think we'll be wearing masks until 2022. Um, you know, my original prediction was we wouldn't see herd immunity until next year. It depends on how much vaccination is going on. But there was comments about wearing two masks. And, and if you read the fine print, always read limitations. They never ran tests about on kids or people that were wearing beards. And they also quoted, um, in the CDC report that if you wore your mask properly, that it would um, decrease the possibility of getting COVID. But I think going into next year, in this, in the, when it's cold, especially flu season, I think we have shown that masks are proven effective measure. And I, and I think it also will continue to reduce COVID. So until we can totally get it under control, uh, if you go into a crowded place or if you travel on a plane or a train in any daily commute, I would wear masks.
Yeah. And I thought the two-mask uh, suggestion had to do with uh, making your mask more fashionable.
No, they, they actually thought that two masks would help.
But that was a joke. That was a joke. Okay, uh, Nancy?
One more comment. I was speaking with a physician I know this earlier today, uh, who said that, you know, we've had very little flu this season, practically none. And this person, we're, you know, attributed it to the fact that we're all wearing masks. So maybe the Asians have had some, some insight, you know, that we should adopt that this uh, mask wearing does keep us healthier. And um, so I think, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get used to the idea. I don't really love it. I'm trying to get used to it because I do think that it is probably better for our health.
Matter of fact, um, we, we also have less of another COVID uh, virus, and that's the common cold. I think that that, you know, that, that's another good reason for continuing to wear a mask, uh, not indefinitely, but at least uh, into next year.
Yeah, just, just to the point of wearing a mask, I just make one last comment. Uh, I remember this time last year, um, I traveled February the 26th. I, I delayed going to Mardi Gras because, and I sort of paused during New Year in Brookline, uh, because I thought that, you know, COVID was in the underbelly, but I didn't want to alarm anybody. But I wore a mask on the plane. And I wore a mask when I arrived. I went to Charlotte instead. And everybody was asking me, why was I wearing a mask? So imagine how far we have came.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from the select board? Any further comments from you, Mr. Kletner? Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Dr. Jet.
Have a good night.
Okay. Um, Fire Chief Employment Contract?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair and members of the board, uh, it's, it's, uh, this item covers both uh, the renewal of the employment contract, but also a reappointment of uh, John Sullivan's tenure as Fire Chief. So uh, Chief Sullivan, uh, started um, three years ago, um, in uh, March and uh, March 26th, to be uh, precise. And the, those three years, um, believe it or not, are up. And uh, he is, and the town is interested in renewing this relationship. I personally will tell you that Chief Sullivan has been an outstanding performer uh, as Fire Chief, also as a member of the town's management team. And especially over the last year, uh, during COVID, uh, his uh, contributions were immeasurable and really, uh, put us, put the town in the position where I think it is today, which uh, is um, you know, surviving with COVID, uh, the best we can and continue to provide very important public services, including fire and, and emergency medical services uh, non-stop throughout the uh, throughout the pandemic, um, even when um, a large or, or a portion of his staff, uh, was infected and, and exposed. Uh, and he still, still found ways to, to make that work. So I just want to say thank you, uh, personally to John who's here this evening, uh, and to commend him for his actions. So um, the uh, the, the board should then reappoint him if you're interested for, for a three-year period. But also, uh, the Fire Chief has an employment agreement, is authorized by law to have an employment agreement with the town. Uh, and I am recommending and have negotiated the terms of a prospective employment agreement with John uh, for your, your approval. Uh, it's coterminous with the three-year renewal. And um, I think one of the things I wanted to mention is it does not guarantee any general wage increase, just like myself or any other department heads of the town. Uh, at this point, we're not expecting one in fiscal '22. Um, and um, John's contract reflects that. Uh, it also um, does acknowledge his uh, transition to Emergency Management Director, which has uh, been huge over the last year. And I'm uh, recommending that stipend be paid for that service of $7,500. And then finally, uh, there are a few modest uh, benefits that um, inure to Fire Department personnel because of the unique aspects of the job. And uh, there is um, uh, small upgrades to those uh, those benefits. Wherever they have increased over the last three years, John has been tied into his contract for three years, so didn't enjoy them when they did increase over the last three-year period. So with that, um, in my memo to the board.
I think you're muted.
Thanks. I don't know how that happened. Um, so in my memo to the board, uh, there is a proposed motion for both the re- reappointment and the renewal. But of course, if you have any questions or you uh, like, want to make any statements, uh, that was the time.
Okay, um, Nancy?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, John, thank you for coming. We really appreciate all the hard work you've done. It's been fantastic. And I hope you stay for another 20 years.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'll be long, dead bye.
Oh, not necessarily. If, if the Holocaust virus can live into their 90s and 100s, uh, the rest of us can too. Okay, any other, um, Raoul?
So I, I just want to echo Nancy's sentiments. You know, I, I've gotten to know a, a number of the department heads, um, in my time on the board and, and I don't know that I've been. time on the board and, uh, and I don't know that I've been as impressed, uh, by, by, you know, I have been impressed by others, of course, but, but, uh, but John, you in particular, and the way that, um, that you've been tremendously responsive, not just to, to me, but to others in the community that have had questions, uh, um, related to the fire department. Um, you know, I learned a lot on the, on the tour, um, that you took some of us on, um, to understand, uh, the needs of the department and understand the innovations that the department is making. Um, and, you know, I think that, that you've just been a tremendous asset for us, your approach, your, your, um, your approachability. Uh, and I, I will, I will never forget, um, marching alongside, you know, I don't know, a thousand, uh, you know, Brookline residents for racial equity and seeing you and other firefighters, um, right there saluting us. And that really meant a lot. And so I just want to thank you for that, um, once again, and, um, really excited to, to have you stay on with us, um, as long as, as long as you'd like.
Thank you, Row.
I'll second that. Heather?
I'll make this very brief, and I mean it when I say that. Um, I still remember when John, you interviewed, um, you know, it was the last round and I think you were the, the top candidate and Mel, um, uh, made introductions to all of the select board members and just your way with people, uh, and the fact that you had a master's in public administration. I was just so impressed um, with the person that I found seated across the table. I knew you were going to be a very good fit.
Thank you, Heather. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Um, and someone coming in from the outside to Brookline and from what I can gather, uh, from what I see, uh, successfully uh, made the transition from the wonderful town of Worcester to Brookline, um, and developed support here in the community that may not be universal. I don't know, but it's very, very broad.
I hope so.
John?
I don't, I don't want to be alone in my silence now because all, all the praise is well deserved. I don't know if people caught it, but there was a picture, uh, a, a photograph of John that popped up on the screen very briefly before he, um, himself, um, showed him, showed himself, uh, on the screen. And, uh, let's just say it was a much younger man and, and I was going to ask him if that was you three years ago, you know? Because I, I know this can't, this isn't always the easiest job, uh, but you wear it extremely well. Um, and I'm going to turn the tables on you just a little bit because people have been saying very well-deserved words about you. Do you want to just say a few words about serving Brookline and, and, you know? And now that you've gotten to know Brookline, um, you know, give, give us your sense of Brookline as a place to, uh, in which to serve.
Sure. Thank you. And, and thanks, everyone, for, uh, the kind words and, uh, I, I truly, uh, appreciate the confidence that, uh, you have all shown in me and, uh, uh, Mr. Kleckner and the, the entire, uh, uh, team here in Brookline. Um, you know, to that point, John, the, the professionalism, especially among the department heads and, uh, uh, and, and my firefighters and our, our relationship with the local 950, uh, has been outstanding. And, uh, you know, the, uh, the fact that I did come from the outside, uh, was a, you know, a, a bit of a challenge. Uh, but, uh, for, uh, the most part, uh, the, the members of this department and certainly the administration and the other department heads embraced uh, having me here, uh, and it's been an honor and a privilege to serve these last three years. Um, you know, it's gone by very fast, uh, but, uh, you know, this last year has been, uh, it's been challenging for all of us, and I'll get into a little of that in the budget summary, but, uh, it's, uh, it's been rewarding as well. It, it, it really allowed, I think, me to showcase, uh, you know, what I was capable of doing and what I promised, uh, Mel that I would bring to the table, uh, as Fire Chief and, and, and as part of his management team. Uh, I emphasized that in my, uh, interviews with, uh, the, the, uh, uh, the town administrator and, uh, I said, I, I, I don't want to be just, you know, the blue collar Fire Chief. I want to be, uh, a real, uh, member of the policy team, uh, with, uh, the, the administration. Uh, and he's allowed me to do that and you have as well, and I want to thank you for that. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Uh, Mel, I have, uh, some ongoing computer issues, so I don't have access to the, uh, to the packet, uh, with, with the language.
Sure. Why don't I read it?
Okay.
Uh, the motion is moved that the Select Board reappoint John F. Sullivan as Fire Chief for a three-year period commencing on March 26, 2021, and approves the renewal of his employment agreement and the document attached Town of Brookline, Massachusetts Fire Chief Employment Contract, March 26, 21 through March 25th, 2024.
Okay, uh, I move approval of the, um, question as presented by, um, Mel Kleckner. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, you all in favor? Nancy?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Row?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Thank you.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
And we really, really appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next, uh, stay here. This be your, uh, 22 Department Budget Review. We're going to be looking at the budgets for the Fire Department and Town Clerk. Is Melissa Goff around?
Um, I think, uh, Melissa or Justin is here. Uh, who, who's going first, uh, team? Or maybe they're not. I, uh, there's Melissa. Okay. I know she was down with the Advisory Committee earlier.
No, I'm hoping it's me.
Okay.
I, I just left the personal, uh, sub, subcommittee of the Advisory Committee, so I'm not sure.
We're, we're just starting the, uh, budget reviews and I didn't know which order we were going in, but apparently John thinks he's first, so, uh.
No, I'm hoping.
I think, yeah, we can stay with the chief.
Good, thank you.
Everybody, uh, share, got the screen okay?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, everyone, and, uh, I just want to briefly go over, uh, the fiscal 22 budget for the Brookline Fire Department. The highlights, uh, I know that you've, uh, seen, uh, the, uh, the budget document, uh, so I won't spend a whole heck of a lot of time on that unless you have specific questions. Uh, there has been a few modest increases, uh, in the budget, but, uh, those are, are very, um, very brief, uh, obviously, as we look at the fiscal 22 budget, uh, it's a very tight budget and, uh, we've made every effort to keep them, uh, to, uh, only the necessities. Uh, and so the highlights of that, um, that stand out when you look down the, the line is, uh, services. Uh, we have an increase of $17,000 going into fiscal, uh, 22. Our current record management system, Firehouse Software, will become unsupported in December of this year. Uh, we, uh, have worked with, uh, IT, uh, and our staff here and, uh, multiple vendors have been vetted. Uh, and, uh, we are, uh, looking to, uh, bring on ESO Solutions as a preferred vendor. Uh, they are actually the purveyors, uh, and they bought out Firehouse Software. Uh, and, um, they are an industry leader along, uh, the lines of records management, which is, uh, a very integral part of, uh, what we do on a daily basis. Uh, it is, uh, the, uh, the, the storehouse of all of our, uh, training records. It is our, uh, administrative attendance record. It, uh, creates our payroll, uh, and it has another of, uh, uh, a number of other features that coincide with the CAD system or the computer-aided dispatch, uh, and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, flexibility of having the ESO Solutions, uh, which is the, which is the owner of Firehouse Software, really affords us the ability to, um, port over the vast amount of information that we have stored in Firehouse uh, at a lot less cost, uh, so we don't have to, uh, create an API with a new vendor. Uh, and it gives us a lot of, um, it gives us a lot of modality in, 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 in the, uh, in the software program where a number of other vendors have, um, kind of an à la carte menu. Uh, the, uh, the ESO Solutions software, um, is a one-stop shop for a lot of the things that we need. So, uh, the recommendation is that we, we, uh, go with, uh, the ESO Solutions. Um, our, uh, cost for the first year is, uh, uh, $17,000 above what we, uh, pay now for Firehouse. Uh, we've had Firehouse for a long time now and, uh, the, uh, the cost for that, um, program has been, been nominal over the years. Um, I assure you that, uh, we looked at all of the costs of the different vendors and, uh, they're all far increased from what we're used to, to, to having, uh, in, in today's, uh, economy. Uh, and so the first year is $17,000, which is, uh, uh, discounted because we are staying with the, uh, so, the same vendor. Uh, and that increases over the next two years to, uh, a steady, uh, pace from there on in. So that is the first, um, increase you'll see. Um, there are some increases in utilities, which, uh, either, uh, Justin or, uh, Melissa, Kevin Masco could, uh, address their, their inflationary increases. Uh, and then finally, there is a modest increase in, uh, in our salaries. Uh, there are contractual obligations for the, uh, Fire Department, uh, as well as, uh, as you know, we received a UAS grant to fund the Emergency Management Coordinator position. Uh, and that was an 18-month funding opportunity with the expectation that the, um, the town would then, uh, take and, uh, continue on that employment. Uh, we were really, really fortunate to be able to, um, uh, wrangle, uh, Cheryl Snyder from Dr. Jet over in the Public Health Department, uh, to a full-time basis where she was a part-time basis over there doing emergency preparedness for him. Uh, and has really continued to do that role along with her new role as EM Coordinator for the last year. Uh, she's done an outstanding job as a, uh, a, a part of the team, uh, that has, has been, uh, really, uh, outstanding over this last year in support of public health. And her knowledge of, uh, that side of the house was really, really, uh, an important value-added component of, in her, her new role as Emergency Management Coordinator. So those are the, uh, the specific, uh, if you will, the, the higher points of any budget increases that you might see in, in the Fire Department budget. And, uh, if you look at the chart that's in the budget book, you'll see, uh, there was no, uh, budget for that, uh, line item for the EM Coordinator. And, uh, we get about half of the year, uh, through the grant and then the second half of the year, uh, which includes, um, her, her salary, uh, her benefits and, uh, some, uh, ancillary, um, support, um, monies for uh, things like paper and so on and so forth for the position, um, that, that's included in that 38,000. The 38,000 actually is, is the, uh, is the salary. The, the, uh, the support stuff would come from our budget. Uh, I know you have a, a listing in your, uh, budget, uh, prepared, uh, for our, uh, accomplishments for 2019 and, and objectives, uh, but, um, I've actually reworked them a little bit because of the ongoing COVID crisis. Uh, I really wanted to highlight the things that were, um, were indicative of the accomplishments of 2021 with regard to the, you know, the two major divisions, so to speak, within the, the, uh, the new Fire Department makeup, and that's the, the Fire Department itself and then Emergency Management. Uh, the ones you have in the book are kind of the, uh, the everyday, uh, accomplishments and objectives that we look at every year. Uh, but obviously this past year has not been ordinary, uh, so I want to just take two minutes or a few time and, and, and really, um, highlights some of the out, extraordinary, if you will, accomplishments. And the first and foremost is, uh, the members of the Fire Department and our local, uh, who were really clearly devoted to the health and safety of our firefighters along with this administration. Uh, and, uh, we're, we were able to quickly develop and implement unprecedented, uh, protocols for our membership uh, in, in COVID-19 and we're actually, um, a, a model, uh, for other fire departments in the region. I've got many calls from different Fire Chiefs asking, you know, hey, how did you do that? Uh, you know, what was your, you know, what was your process and so on? And I want to compliment, uh, the men and women of the Brookline Fire Department, uh, my staff up here, uh, and, uh, in, in the office and, uh, all of the, all of the, uh, uh, the, the locals help as well to, to, uh, put some things aside, uh, relax, uh, our, our, uh, our, uh, our stringency in, in rules and regulations, so to speak, to, to, for lack of a better phrase, and, and allow things to, uh, to happen, which were in the best interest of, of everybody at the time. Those things included the health assessments. You see the PPE acquisitions. Uh, like everybody else, we were way behind the eight ball when this thing hit, uh, and we were able to be creative along with, uh, Charlie Simmons and, uh, Dave Genikakis and the entire team, um, Justin Casanova Davis and, and utilizing the CARES money to get the PPE that we needed. Uh, and, uh, through, uh, MEMA, we, we now have more than enough PPE. Uh, we adjusted our medical responses, but we still continued to go to 100% of all of those calls. Uh, and obviously, early on, there was a, a much higher risk of our folks becoming, uh, in- infected, uh, with the virus, uh, with the lack of PPE and the lack of knowledge of the virus, just in general. We developed, uh, a, a number of different, uh, COVID-19 exposure, uh, policies, uh, including things, uh, around firefighter injury, quarantine testing, vaccination programs over the year. Uh, and those evolved along with all of the things that you've heard from Dr. Jet and me, uh, over the course of this last year. Um, things were changing on a weekly, uh, basis, sometimes daily basis. And, uh, we, we were able to be flexible and, uh, make those things happen. And, uh, we did have a surge early on where we had, uh, 44 of 153 firefighters, uh, either quarantined or isolated at one given time, uh, which made it challenging, but our folks stepped up and they did a great job. Uh, facilities cleaning and disinfecting, again, kudos to Charlie Simmons and his group. Uh, and I, I just want to, two seconds to, uh, acknowledge Sarah Sloman and, uh, Mary Ellen Norman, uh, for their help in, uh, allowing us to use temporary housing at the Brookline Main Library. Uh, the Board of Trustees, uh, for the library and the school board, uh, for allowing us to use those facilities. Uh, it really helped us to cut down our exposures within, uh, the department. Uh, secondly, uh, I want to, uh, just go into the Emergency Management. Uh, as you know, uh, at the, uh, beginning, the State of Emergency Declaration from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in town, uh, still ongoing. We're still in an, a state of emergency. And as such, the Emergency Operations Center is still active. Uh, we are not 24-hour, you know, active, but we are active and, uh, we are manning the, uh, Emergency Operations Center every day. Um, Monday through Friday, we, uh, operated a call center early on to take some of the pressure off of Dr. Jet, uh, and his folks, uh, so that we could answer questions for our citizens. Uh, and we utilize some of our, uh, employees who, uh, were, uh, temporarily, uh, not, not, uh, in the, in the field, uh, because of, uh, COVID restrictions. And, uh, some of them, uh, were utilized in the call center answering questions, uh, and, uh, taking some of that, um, that burden off of, uh, as I said, Dr. Jet, so they could uh, concentrate on, uh, contact tracing and the things that need, they needed to do and not a- answer all of the day-to-day, um, questions that were coming up. And I think we really did a great job, uh, of putting the community at ease. And, uh, I, I, I really want to, uh, take two seconds again. I know I did this once previously earlier on in the pandemic, but to acknowledge the, uh, the, the establishment of, uh, of the Emergency Management Team, uh, that came together incredibly quickly and, uh, the group of professionals from, um, Emergency Management Cheryl and, uh, and, uh, the, the folks there. Uh, Public Health Pat Maloney came down to the EOC and he was with us, uh, came out of retirement and he stayed with us as our technical advisor. Uh, the, the Police Department, uh, pretty much gave us their entire Community Service Division for, for a long time. Some members of my staff, uh, were detailed down there. Lee Jackson did an outstanding job of, uh, ti- heading up our planning, uh, section and Mary Ellen Norman and, uh, uh, Matt Gillis and, and also Karen King from, uh, the School Department, uh, did an outstanding job of, uh, of, uh, logistics. If, uh, anybody knows how to buy stuff, it's the School Department and those guys did a great job. Uh, also got, you know, help from Bill, uh, uh, from the Veterans Affairs and, and, uh, the, obviously the Select Board's Office and Town Administrator's Office and Communications, uh, and the folks from Community Development. We work for the various community groups. Again, uh, the Food Pantry Mutual at Brookline, Brookline Housing Authority. You just heard Dr. Jet talked about the vaccines, uh, and, uh, our coordination with his, his, uh, uh, oversight with the, the members of the Public Health Department to help, uh, bring vaccines to the Brookline Health Department. And early on, working with the the folks at. Planning and Community Development to get in touch with our business owners and give them guidance on how they. Can best utilize P P E and the restrictions and so on. It was a lifesaver getting the the Guilfoyle Group Consulting in and coordinating our information strategy and Devin. Did an outstanding job there and utilization of our our new emergency communication system. And and you know, we we also supported the town clerk through multiple election cycles. With volunteers as well as logistical support for P P E for them as well and so. Was it was a great job by all. And finally, the objectives for the fiscal twenty two. These these are our standard objectives and and they're in your your packet. All of the things that we normally are looking at, some of the things that we had as our objectives last year reappear this year because, you know, quite frankly, we just. We just didn't have the time to get to the things like. Redoing the rules and regulations and the S O Gs we had to prioritize and. But the vast majority of these, there are ongoing objectives. And then finally. The the objectives for covid support going forward to continue to help Dr. Jet and his team. And and Nancy addressed it earlier, identifying vulnerable populations, especially those folks who are homebound right now. We've had to be flexible, we had geared up and ramped up for mass vaccinations. With our emergency management team and then that kind of rug got pulled out from under us by the state for right now, but we're still planning. We're still contacting our folks, we're still. Got a a call center going down there and we're answering questions for our our folks here at Brookline and we're helping them to. Identify places to get the vaccine and to giving them some technical support so that they can. You know, navigate the web and get get the answers that they need. We we we're still developing and maintaining our logistical infrastructure, making sure we have resiliency, redundancy and capacity. To meet the needs going forward and. You know, what the needs may for the future so that we're more prepared the next time around. And hopefully there won't be a next time around, but. We are, we're, we're, we're trying to be ready and and able to hit the ground running. And in in the event that we have to do this again. So that's just a brief overview of the of the budget and I'd be glad to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board?
Um, I I have a few, but let me let me start by asking one. And it's about your role as Emergency Management Director, one of the things. That um, that we saw early in this covid nineteen crisis is that. Using I statements, it wasn't altogether clear to me. Exactly where the authority of the Select Board started and ended versus the. The Health Commissioner versus your role and and others and Mel's, of course, and so I think. In in today, I I haven't been included in any sort of like emergency scenario planning or anything like that. I I I'd love to see us somehow involved in that, even if it is. We're in the middle of of a crisis and is in a limited role. You know, there wasn't the kind of communication that I would have hoped for expected and. And and it wasn't altogether clear what it was that we could or were supposed to do in in all of this. I don't think I'm alone in that, but but I'm using I statement, so maybe you can reflect on that and. Plans to include us in some of the emergency management planning going forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Raoul. You know, when I, when I first took over the job as a emergency management director in July of nineteen. I I I wasn't planning on a pandemic hitting us just, you know, eight months later. But one of the things that I saw as a deficiency in the previous. Kind of evolution of the emergency management team was that it was not cohesive. And one of the reasons that I I I fought so hard to get that emergency management coordinator position is so that we would have a day to day person. Solely dedicated to emergency management in town. And one of the things that we started right away was some training and and part of that training was for the E M T staff. That we had identified that had been longstanding members of the emergency management team, which is kind of this. You know, volunteer kind of ad hoc team of department heads, people who the department head said, yeah, you're going to the. Emergency Management Team this month and and so, but very dedicated folks. And we did a web B O C training, we did a Emergency Operations Center training. And one of the very next things that was on our agenda to do was to bring incident command system training. To the policy group, which is where the Select Board fits in. There's the operations folks and then there's the policy group and the policy group, as you know, as your role is now, is to develop policy. And under a state of emergency, it gets a little convoluted because Dr. Jet gets these extreme powers. As the Public Health Director in the case of a pandemic. And, you know, we we just never got to that and and I apologize for that in in, you know, in my role. We were so. Busy trying to hit each crisis every day, every day, every day, and I know that. Lee Jackson was working with you and Heather early on on that mutually Brookline piece and tried to keep. Keep that running and 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 have an opportunity for that, but the the the. Shorter answer is it's policy, it's developing policy and in a general. Emergency sense, if we were to have in a, you know, a kind of the, if you will, normal emergency that, you know, E M. Is used to a tornado or a hurricane or a, you know, and for us, it's generally speaking, a large snow event. The policies for a snow event are pretty simple, the public health, I mean, the Public Works Commissioner. Has kind of the lead role, they go ahead and do the things that they need to do based on history. If we were get getting into a more substantive weather event. Then we'd have to be coming to you guys for action on policies to spend money. And and who who would get things first? In a pandemic, it's just a little bit different because a lot of our, a lot of our stuff is dictated to us from outside.
Yeah, and I'll say too, I mean, in in a in a place like, let's say Worcester, you have the ability to huddle together with the mayor and sort of talk about a path forward. Here you have a select board that's subject to O M L and it's not all, again, altogether clear to me, under what circumstances we can meet in emergency fashion and. And sort of, you know, help. Help be part of the solution, you know, not give direction necessarily, we're not needed in emergency, but. But you rightly point out that this emergency has been very different than a sort of acute emergency that. That sort of takes place and we're sort of dealing with the aftermath. This whole time, we've been in the middle of it and we're still literally in a state of emergency, which is. Is bizarre. Yeah.
We've been trying to keep the town administrator and his group in in the in the loop in terms of, you know, the things that we. We, you know, we were trying to accomplish and, you know, at some level, I, I, you know, I'm sure they were. You know, updating you, we've had the covid task force and then the Dr. Jet and myself on often occasions. Have come before you and the Select Board for the covid briefings, but to your point. We 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 will definitely, you know, work on doing a better job of of clarifying those roles and supporting those roles. As we go forward.
Great, I'll just say to your credit, to to Mel's credit, to our entire staff's credit. I'm really proud of the response that we did have.
Me too.
Immediately and then then throughout, I, you know, I I think that that. That the right decisions were made and and a really difficult situation circumstances with very limited information. I think we met that made the best decisions possible, so I'm I'm just really proud of 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 how we went through all.
Thank you, I me too.
Any other questions, comments?
Again, Chief, congratulations on a a difficult year and and a great. Performance, but I I just wanted to ask you, if you if you wouldn't mind commenting. On the role played by the men and women of the Dispatch Center. In this very difficult year.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the issues that came up and I think were resolved, but you can tell us.
Yeah, you know, the 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 Dispatch Center has had its challenges staff wise. You know, the the dedicated folks over there at the Dispatch Department have really. Have really done an outstanding job throughout this year, especially under such difficult circumstances. We we really went into the pandemic with a difficult staffing shortage over there. And between Chief Lipson at the time, myself. And the administration, we were able to sit with the the union for the dispatchers and reconcile some. Some differences early on, we brought on Darius Baramudi as the new coordinator. Literally Kevin, who was, his last name escapes me now, how. Unfortunate, but he he was our dispatch coordinator and he left us just prior. Like literally weeks prior to the pandemic heated hitting. And we didn't, we kind of rudderless in the in the in the situation over there. The Police Department supervision was was taking the lead as as dispatch falls under their. Their organizational structure, but. We we were able to right the ship, I think relatively early. More, I would say more, the members of the Dispatch. Folks were righted the ship early and they did an outstanding job and and, you know, they. They continue to do that every day for us.
Hey, any other questions?
I did have one other question, maybe it's, was Melissa still here? It was about, I know we had talked about. Needs for the fire department, this was all pre covid, of course, and and potentially we had talked about at some point. The need to potentially go to the voters for an override. I was just curious about where we are there, it's not, it's not relative to the specific budget, but just with respect to the needs of the department, maybe. A Mel or I don't know.
I can sort of address it unless Mel wants to do it. We have a meeting with the Capitol Subcommittee of the A C next week to address that. Station renovation project, which is the the major piece of it, which will require debt exclusion to do that. Currently, Charlie Simmons and myself and are reevaluating the numbers based on the the changes. That have unfortunately come economy wise, so. You know, that that's still, you know, a a top priority for us because of the implications of. Health and safety to our firefighters and just basic standard of living for our firefighters, so. We we will be bringing that forward to the. To the to the the Capitol Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee. You know, that it, we obviously have to look at the economy and other other competing. Issues within the town, we we were hopeful to get, you know, a debt exclusion. Sometime in this fiscal year, but it's probably not the time or the place to do that. We got preempted by the the need to move quickly on on the Newbury College deal. So, you know, there there's always competing, you know, demands for the the taxpayers' money, but. You know, we're certainly going to move forward and and hopefully garner the support that we need to to get those things done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you for all of that, I think this is a very well thought out. Budget, given our resources, but that's what I want to ask you about. If we had additional resources. Where would you think that we need to enhance the fire department, if at all?
Well, beyond the capital investments, we. We we had lobbied for and had got into the budget, an expansion of our Fire Prevention Bureau by one lieutenant. Just prior to the to the adoption of the fiscal twenty one budget and we had to. Give that up at at that time in order to make the cuts that we needed to stay within the bounds of what. The administration was looking for, so. That is still a priority for for me and for us in terms of. That piece of it, certainly continuing on with the. E M Coordinator position, I think is invaluable to the town as a as a whole, but cert- I I I would say. You know, the funding of that Fire Prevention Lieutenant is near the top priority. The rest of the things right now are are more like capital and, you know, we will. We'll be working with Melissa and and Mel and the Capital Subcommittee to try to. Identify where we'll be able to pay for those things, so we're in the process of a brand new radio system. We're still working on the. The infrastructure for the Fire Street Boxes and the Master Boxes with the D P W and. Converting those all over to the radio boxes and we still have our rehab program. Kind of thankfully, it just so happened that in fiscal twenty two and fiscal twenty three. We don't have any major apparatus, rehabs or purchases necessary for the fire department on our schedule, so. We were very blessed to kind of dodge that bullet in capital for the next couple of years, but. You know, I appreciate the 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 question though and, you know, we'll still, we'll still be advocating for the things that we think we need. My my main priority is the health and safety of the firefighters and that renovations project, which includes a number of different. Fingers to it that in include some OSHA mandates and addressing some of the things that have been endemic for a long time are. Are kind of embedded in that. Multiple million dollar project, so.
Can I have a follow up?
Yes.
So you mentioned, I think you mentioned the call boxes.
Yep.
That are around town, they're old fashioned and they're charming and I'm wondering whether the new equipment will fit in them. And whether we have to abandon them. Look of of them altogether.
Yeah, so the 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 trend for municipalities is is to move away from the. Hardwired boxes and move towards a wireless system and that's what. The recommendation of the report was ten years ago, Mel can maybe. I I forget the name of the the actual report, but that was made over ten years ago and we just took it on in this last two years. And, you know, the we're we're looking at A D A compliance, we're looking at energy efficiency. And we're also looking at the the most necessary places in town around parks, around schools, around populated areas. To keep that system in place and it's not just fire call boxes, these call boxes are emergency. Call boxes, they're still red, they still kind of identify fire, but they're more like what you'd see on a college campus, if you pick up that phone. You're going to get help from the nine one one system here in town, so I think we've done a good job of. Kind of blending the old with the new, it's. It's sad to lose some of the charm, but when the infrastructure just doesn't support it anymore, it just doesn't support it anymore.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Chief Sullivan, really appreciate you're coming to us and presenting your budget. And of course, we appreciate everything you do just in general. Okay, let's move on. Thank you. To the town clerk's budget, I see Jeff Netting is here.
I I thought I was here, but oh, here we go.
Your name here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. First, I have to thank the board. And three quarters of the department over this last year to help the clerk's office through three election cycles. Everybody stepped up to the plate beyond, above and beyond the call of duty to make those successful. And we wouldn't have been able to pull those off without so much support, so thank you to the board as well as. Too many departments to mention, Linda is dealing some personal matters this evening, so she can't be with us, but. I'm here to speak and support our budget request, it's pretty straightforward, our budget's down about twenty three percent or a hundred and. Forty three thousand dollars from this fiscal year and that's a direct result of fewer elections, really. Elections are expensive and we have to ramp up for each one with a lot of part time help and a lot of overtime, but in fiscal twenty two. We're budgeting for one election in May of twenty two so that we we're able to cut the budget. Our staffing levels remain the same, I believe they're adequate. As long as we are able to access the part time help for the census as well as during the election cycle. As long as we are able to access the part time help for the census as well as during the election cycle. We we are ramping up for this year's election. I just want to touch bases with that a little. Last day to take out papers and put them back is March 16th for the May 4th election. We are planning on a regular quote unquote election this year. Right now, there's no allowance for mail in ballot or early voting. On the table, people can get absentee ballots. If they do want one, they should absolutely put their request in sooner rather than later. We don't expect to get the actual ballots till April 15th or so, so we have a very short window. To turn around any ballots for absentee. So if your request is here already. That's going to make our job a lot easier and guarantee that we get your ballot back in time. But. For those who may have not voted in person over the last three elections. It's incredibly safe thanks to the Fire Chiefs, the Health Department, the DPW, the facilities folks, the school folks. We are COVID free environment and so if folks haven't come out to vote, it's going to be a beautiful May day. I know it already. And people should feel very safe to come out and vote, bring a mask and we provide gloves and sanitizer and all those other things. So. For those both running and for residents, plan on a regular election. You just don't have those options. They'd probably be in place for 2022, but the legislature is in the process of working with the Secretary of State. On proposed long term changes to the election laws and hopefully will encourage. Greater voting and make it much easier to access that. So and we're fully supportive of those. So I also want to thank Mel and Melissa and Justin in the IT Department because. Our ability to keep our staffing level low is is. Really being helped by improvements in technology. We've partnered with the schools technology to manage public record requests through their software. And we'll share that with them in fiscal 22. We get a tremendous amount of requests and some of them are very complicated. So the ability to have a software program that deals with that. It meets the requirements of the law is going to be incredibly helpful. We're on the road to election software. You know, Pat and Linda had everybody's name, address and phone number memorized. It was a poll worker, but with those folks departing and with a huge turnover in poll workers. We think that a small investment in some software that can manage all our poll workers, provide online training. And you know, give people a heads up is going to save hundreds and hundreds of hours of chasing down people. We're also working with Devin. I know, I think this is in the selectmen's request. On committee software, even though it's the primary job of the board, we need access to that. To make sure that people have done appropriate ethics training and other training required by the town bylaws. You know, I didn't count, but you probably have six or eight hundred committee members and the paper and pen. Approach is not really that effective, so hopefully that will get approved and make both our lives a lot easier. And thanks to Devin for taking the lead on that. We've also put in the capital budget and hopefully this will get approved, long overdue new ballot election equipment. And ours is worn out. It's not supported. I think you heard our presentation before, so hopefully that will get. Approved and the next clerk will have an opportunity to procure that with a process. So you know, we, I want to also thank our employees. We were one of the few departments who were boots on the ground throughout this whole COVID. You can't run an election on a Zoom meeting. You can't give out a death certificate and all the licensing and all those things that are required. So we we worked through the COVID and took turns, but we had folks in the office. Fully staffed throughout this and we wouldn't have been able to successfully have these elections without their support and extra effort. So hats off to a great staff. And finally, just this is beyond the budget, but if the CPA passes or if the grants available or. If the town finances do improve, we have an absolute treasure of historical documents in our vault that desperately need restoration. I think I read a report from years ago speaking about that, but that's about a 50. We brought in some experts and got some prices. That's about a $50,000 cost. It's not critical, but over the next two or three years, if funds become available through any resources. It really needs to be a priority. You have documents from the 17 and 1800s that. You know, once they fail, they'll be gone forever. So just put that in the back burner and. Hopefully you, when the time comes, you can deal with that. Other than that, we're in the middle of the census. We sent out 31,000 envelopes. Please send. Your census back. Maybe we'll recruit Nancy to be the spokesperson again. But it's critically important that people return their census for both voting and and other information. 2020 will be a redistricting year, so the select board will need to be involved once the federal census is finalized. And you need to look at if we have to move district lines and also look at polling locations. So that would be a big chore for the new clerk and the board and the administration and IT. As we go forward. So happy to answer any questions about the budget or anything else that we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you. And the the project for. Stabilizing the historical documents and that is incredibly important. If we don't know our history. Or can't get to our history, we're really kind of stuck in a bad future, so.
So we have a ballot with Abe Lincoln's name on it.
Pardon me?
We have like things like a ballot with Abe Lincoln's name on it. So things like that. I mean, desperately need to be saved and hopefully you'll get a historic museum someday and. Put all those on display.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, any questions? Mel? You have a question?
I really wanted to make a comment and it was more, you know, Jeff. Nutting has given a lot of thanks, so but I want to thank him. You know, Jeff didn't didn't have to come out of retirement and work for the town of Brookline, but he did. And he's given it his all. Most days I see his car here long before I get here. And I know what he's doing and you know, it's it's just. It's just really a tremendous commitment that he's made for the town and I want just to say thank you to Jeff and to say thank you publicly.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
Done.
And I will add my own vote of thanks. And Jeff, I know from experience, you are not shy. About speaking out on the question of whether. An appointed town clerk is really the professional way to go for town clerk office operations. And through the wisdom of town meeting, voters in Brookline are going to have an opportunity to vote on that question in the upcoming election. There will be a ballot question asking to approve the vote of town meeting. To transition our town clerk's office from elected elective as it has been in the past to appointed. Would you just take a minute and give voters your wisdom on why this is an important question?
Well, I'll follow up on what you know, Pat actually sent in writing several months ago. I mean, you're losing a treasure of the community with his unfortunate retirement. And with Linda leaving as well, I mean, that's 50 or 60 years of knowledge that they're leaving and and with no. You know, success, apparent successor. So the ability to bring in a professional. Person with years of experience, there are a lot of challenges in the clerk's office because of what's going on, unfortunately. We need a full blown filing plan. We need, we have literally. Thousands and thousands of pieces of paper on the clerk's offices floor that just have never been filed and. There's no game plan and we've cleaned up as much as we can. We have new election. Equipment coming, we have redistricting coming, we have. The day to day operations, we have new technology coming. So. I just think, again, it's up to the citizens, but there's a lot of priorities that will face the clerk. In the next couple of years. And that have just been backlogged for a lot of reasons through no one's fault. So. Again, you know, you hear the argument, you need to keep elections safe, but. Communities across the Commonwealth have appointed clerks and you don't hear things about pressure or corruption or. That their democracy is in danger because a department head is elected. So. I think it's it's risk management on behalf of the citizens to consider that. To get somebody high qualified versus just someone that wants to be the clerk. So that's kind of what. I don't have any vested interest. I don't live here and don't want a jobs, but that's just 40 years of professional experience speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And on the the historical archives note, I'm just going to throw in one more little footnote. We discovered at the Brookline Historical Society not too long ago. Because a bunch of records from the town clerk's office, which quite literally, there was no place to store them anymore. We, you know, we'd run out of storage space. People were looking around the town. Where can we put these records? And somebody went through them to see what was in them. They were cards that people voters fill out. It used to be that you would fill out an index card and it would be kept in an index card file. You know, your voter registration records. And so they were going through it and they came across John Kennedy's voter registration. You know, so. You don't necessarily think of, you know, an index card file as being an important and worthy historical record. But if you if you take the time to go through it, you might be surprised.
Okay, Raoul.
Sure. It was just going to note, I was I was looking to confirm and to this, no one's actually pulled papers to run for town meeting, for town clerk. And so maybe that's that's also an indication, although I do wonder, and I don't need an answer now, what happens if if the vote to change to. To an appointed town clerk fails, but we have no candidate actually running for town clerk. Anyway, and I my, what I want to say was that I think especially when we go from someone. Who's been with us for a very long time in terms of Pat Ward. To to someone new that succession planning is really important. So that we can we can take the best of of what Pat, and by the way, Linda too. You know, provided us and and all of their knowledge, but also, you know, be able to move forward at the same time. So. You know, I'm assuming Mel's got a plan and maybe maybe that includes parts of Linda and parts of Jeff, but you know, I think Jeff. I'm glad you're here today because you know, we all get to thank you for stepping in during very difficult times. And and you're right, three elections during all of this and it's just amazing how. They were done safely and securely and you know, you all made us really proud with how you did this. So just wanted to raise my hand and say thanks.
Been an honor to serve you.
Nancy.
I just want to add my thanks to you, Jeff, for stepping in. I think it was a very difficult situation. So many of us were so used to Pat and the way he did things and. You know, it was a shock when he was unable to come back. And the fact that you came in and you so professionally organized things and made sure that stuff happened, you and Linda together. And I think that was, it was a tough, I know you didn't anticipate that in your retirement. Wasn't at the top of your list. I'm glad Mel persuaded you. I don't know what it took for him to do that. I'm glad he did. And you know, I think we, Raoul's right, we do need some idea of. Of training for whoever it is we get next. And maybe there's, I don't know whether you've started to think about it or you've had time to think about it, you or Linda. As to whether there's some sort of manual that needs to be put together. I know a lot of this stuff is in their heads. And a lot of the things they did, you know, and did well. You know, this came to the fore when they needed to deal with it, but. For the next person, are there, is there going to be some sort of manual that says, okay, for, these are the procedures for. Excuse me, issuing a death certificate or a marriage certificate or these are the rules around. How you prepare for elections. Is there such a thing?
So most of, most of that is in statute. You know, 99% of what a clerk does is in statute. But there, but there should be a written policy manual, especially for new people. You're right, Linda and Pat had tremendous amount of knowledge and some of the staff has gained that, but. There's also school for town clerks for certification to three year program. And then there's also a great network of clerks. They have their own listserv. In the Commonwealth, so if you don't know something, you can usually reach out to somebody, but. Clearly, written policy and procedure is critical from a risk management perspective. You know, we had a little hiccup during the primary on some of the ballots and I think that if there was a written. Document before that, you know. We caught it, but you know, we could have prevented it. And so that's an example of, yeah, there's a lot of state laws. But it doesn't, the state law doesn't tell you how to mail out mail in ballots. And so that's a very good example of what needs to come to pass.
I hope that in addition to the manual and and. The listserv of town clerks that you leave us your cell phone number, because I'm sure that. A lot of, a lot of things that really depend on sort of the wisdom I think you've developed. In this job, because you came in at a time that was unique in our history. Almost and you figured it out and you know, I think that took some. You know, some smarts that, you know, we really could use as we go forward.
I know it's available. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or comments? Okay, Mr. Nutting, thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Okay, what's next on this agenda here?
The number eight on our agenda has been withdrawn, given the fact that individual board members have already signed this letter. So the final matter on the agenda is the reports of the the two police organizations.
Okay. Raoul agreed to let me go first. For some reason. So Devin, do you have my slides? Okay, one of the things that working on this committee has done for me is to bring me into the 21st century with things like Google Docs and. Google Slides and all those other things that, you know. Replacing the legal pads and. And other things that I'm used to. So let's start. Keep the title page up for a little while, Devin. Let me start by saying that the presumption of the Police Reforms Committee is that the Brookline Police Department is a very good department. In all areas of current concerns with policing nationally. As I've always said, it's not perfect. We have a lot of issues that we need to resolve. But I urge the community and this board to not undermine the very, the very, very good. Because it is not perfect. Or because of the sins of other police departments. The next slide, Devin. So what I call an assemblage of exceptional experts. The work of the Reform Committee was done by a stellar group of experts in the areas of concern about policing. That dominate the national discussion. The committee included academic and practicing experts in the social sciences and data analysis. And in the intersection of policing and mental health, substance abuse. Youth issues and concerns, poverty and the criminal justice system. We asked for their help and they stepped forward and really did an incredible job, in my opinion. We also could not have succeeded. Without the assistance of town staff who went above and beyond to make our investigation a success. And we all know who they are. It's not just Devin, as incredible as she may be. It's many other town staff people who who really made it possible to. For this committee to be successful, as they've made it possible for the town to survive through the current pandemic. And I must say that the assistance from town employees and town staff also included. Very valuable input from the police department from top to bottom. Including sworn officers and civilian staff people. The knowledge of everything from just how how policing works. The terminology that has been used to make make it clear what we're talking about. We were able. Um, we we were able to get from them and and I want, when I say that I appreciate that. So I want to thank the incredible members of the committee, and on behalf of the committee, I want to thank the town staff who provided uh, the help necessary to um, to do the report that we've done. I think about a hundred and eighty pages plus another volume of appendices. Uh, so, you know, the way to read this is not try to read a hundred and eighty pages of very, very dense information in one night, but, you know, start with for example, this slide deck, which will be available after the, after this meeting. Uh, and then in the report, there's an introduction that provides what is essentially a executive summary uh, of the report. So, yeah, here's a roadmap of my presentation. And I'll start out with breaking news, and then, as you see, there'll be other items to to discuss. I want to first say that the main body of my presentation is going to be recommendations of the subcommittee to the select board. Uh, and this Reform Committee organizes itself into five subcommittees. Uh, Accountability chaired by Michael Zurob, who's a PhD candidate in government at Harvard, working on, among other, among working on, in fact, uh, politics of crime and policing. How more relevant can you get? Uh, the Civil Rights Militarization and Mass Events Subcommittee chaired by former District Court Judge Paul Ye. Uh, the Community Outreach Youth and Non-Traditional Roles Subcommittee, uh, chaired by Sergeant Casey Hatchett, who, among other roles, was the data analyst for the Brookline Police Department. Uh, Mental Health and Substance Abuse Disorders Subcommittee chaired by Elizabeth Childs, who's a former commissioner of mental health for the Commonwealth. And the Personnel and Governance Committee chaired by Elizabeth Childs also. So I've tried to organize the recommendations of the five subcommittees in a way that can be uh, presented concisely and clearly. At the end of my presentation, select board members who have questions of the chairs of the subcommittee, or even questions of me, uh, can ask at that point. Uh, as you know, we will hold a public hearing on March sixteen on the two committees' reports. Uh, and then we will vote on the recommendations of the two committees on March thirty. Uh, between now and March thirty, you can look more deeply into the explanations for the recommendations that the select board will vote on that are of particular concern to you. And as I said, this slide presentation will be available to the select board and the public following this meeting. So I I mentioned this thing called breaking news. I don't mean to be um, funny about this, but, you know, within the last week, the Reforms Committee uh, began developing a survey for distribution to the Brookline Police Department to gauge their views on the department, the community, and their work. We got this idea from a similar survey that was conducted by the Newton, uh, by by town of Newton, or city of Newton. Uh, as of four PM today, there were ninety-five respondents. Right? Over the short period of time, ninety-five respondents for a more than fifty percent response rate, I believe. I haven't done the calculations, but I do know that at least seventy-six percent uh, of the patrol officers of the department responded. I think that's a very good response rate. And on your screen are some of the preliminary findings of the survey. We're still doing analysis of the data, which will be released once completed. The highlights, I think, I'm just gonna mention a few, uh, are that respondents to the survey said, thought that residents had a lukewarm opinion of the police. I think that's interesting. Uh, they generally did not feel that the leadership of the town were supportive uh, of the police. Now, it's not clear who is the leadership that they were referring to. Was it the select board? Was it the town administrator? Was it the chair of the select board? Uh, was it a town meeting? Um, so we'll have to sort of figure that out as we do the analysis. Uh, thirdly, the morale in the department is is an issue. It's low. Uh, and that will have an impact, and it is having an impact on retention of the officers, a retention of officers who we've recruited, spent money and time to train. Uh, and sometimes we lose, and that's really a huge problem. Also impacting retention is compensation. Many of the respondents felt that Brookline's compensation was not comparable to surrounding communities in the state police. Now, you know, that's not as straightforward as it may seem, because compensation in different communities means different things, but, you know, the 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 belief that that is a problem is something that becomes a problem for us. And, um, you know, finally, there was some indication that there are a number of employees in the police department who are looking to to leave, looking for better opportunities. That, you know, this, that this committee has come up with some ideas to to address that. But it is a problem that this survey shows. Uh, it's a problem that we we figured out in our deliberations of the committee, this problem that this survey um, shows is 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 a real problem that we really have to make uh, make a point of doing something about. Devon, could you move to the accomplishments of the committee? So here, I'm not gonna go over these, but, you know, they're fairly straightforward. Um, you know, I identified four accomplishments of the committee from the chokehold ban uh, to the inter-agency task force on homelessness. Um, you know, uh, there's a lot of information in our report that goes into those things in in great detail. Uh, then, general recommendations. Uh, these are recommendations of a general nature and not requiring select board approval, which the select board should be aware. Um, and those are recommendations to the town in general. Uh, I want to mention just three, the recommendation that webpages and other town documents uh, be consistent in the terminology they use. Um, uh, with respect to a number of of departments, but I'm focusing here on Department of Public Health uh, and Human Services. Um, you know, we're gonna be mentioning that department a lot in our report. Uh, you want to give them some additional responsibilities to to take some of the load off of the police department with respect to certain types of of issues that the police now deal with. Um, secondly, uh, you know, and this, this is interesting. One one issue that the police have have identified, not in the survey necessarily, uh, but generally is, uh, you know, uh, the fact that a lot of the things that they get blamed for in terms of racial profiling really originate in the community. Um, and that's the so-called suspicious activity or suspicious person calls. Um, and these are calls from citizens generally based on racial profiling. One of the ones that was mentioned during one of our committee hearings was a call about hooligans doing shenanigans uh, in a park. And, you know, I mean, that that that, yeah, in many communities, I think in Brookline, we don't really have this this problem in terms of police overreaction, but in many communities, that could be the start of a real a real bad situation, uh, as police responding to a community racial profiling or other profiling. That gets out of hand. Uh, thirdly, uh, we're we're focused, we want to urge the police department to focus on officer wellness programs, uh, including addressing stress that families of police officers are now suffering as a result of all this going on in this country and in the world, actually. Um, and the reason why this is particularly important, it was summarized in President Obama's Twenty-First Century Policing Task Force Report, uh, where the phrase was hurt people, hurt people. So police officers who are hurt, who are under stress, make bad decisions, and they hurt people. So officer wellness is something that is incredibly important to all the things that that we're concerned of. Uh, you know, nationally and and here in Brookline. So next, a cause, uh, let's see. Do you move on to, um, recommendations uh, to the select board or universal recommendations? The key universal recommendation, the only one I'm gonna really talk about right now, is uh, a recommendation of the Accountability Subcommittee uh, to have the select board uh, establish and appoint what we're calling a Police Commissioners Advisory Committee. I mean, if there's a better name, we'll take it. Uh, but we're calling it the PCAC. Um, and it's described a little more in the slides. But it's primarily a vehicle to assist the select board in performing its police commissioner work of providing civilian oversight to the police department. And it will also serve as an ombuds person. That's a word we invented, I think. Uh, but you know what that means. Uh, ombuds person role to provide an additional avenue for public input on policing issues. Uh, the PCLC, uh, the PCAC will operate within the structure of the police commissioner role of the select committee or this select board, uh, not outside that structure. And that is, you know, maybe something that's gonna be a little controversial that we'll have to talk about. You know, why do we not have an independent police uh, review board uh, as opposed to the Police Commissioner Advisory Committee that we're we're proposing? Okay, move on to the next slide, PCAC tasks. Uh, that slide has some, some of the items that the Police Committee, uh, Police Commissioner Advisory Committee will be doing. Um, you know, first, uh, on the list, there is something that's particularly important, and that is determining the extent and cause of racial and other disparities in vehicle stops, which requires not just looking at the data from from the police department, but requires uh, in this case, a benchmark, what what's what we call a benchmark, and that is, what are you comparing the number of stops, for example, of black motors to? It clearly can't be to the uh, percentage of black residents uh, here in town of Brookline. Um, because uh, many more people travel through Brookline than live, live, live here, black or white. Uh, so, you know, that we need to come up with a benchmark, and and that's one of the tasks that the PCAC will will, uh, you know, work on in terms of identifying, you know, what type of benchmark makes the most sense. Um, cost as well, and and other things to to go forward with that. Um, so, uh, the main set of recommendations are the subcommittee's recommendations uh, to the select board. And I'm going to go through, um, and I apologize for how much uh, how many recommendations there are, but I I did try to shave it down uh, so that this presentation won't be excessively long, but uh, let's start with the Accountability Subcommittee. Uh, as as I mentioned, it recommends the establishment of the PCAC. Um, the cost estimates for that is minimal staff support and miscellaneous costs that may be decided uh, by the select board to um, be included in there uh, in for the PCAC. Then, for example, uh, one, one idea that someone came up with is, uh, the PCAC should should participate in some of the police trainings to just give some, give an assessment of of how effective they are. But that costs money, and the select board can decide that that's worthy or worthwhile expenditure. Uh, of course, it also depends on, you know, whether that's even appropriate, because the presence, I know this from my own personal experience. My presence as a select board member at a training, I think, may have had, may have, may have had a slight impact on, um, you know, how the officers in that particular training may have um, discussed certain issues. So, you know, those are the type of issues that have to be considered before something like that is done, but that's the type of miscellaneous costs that we may want to incur. Um, we're asking that the select board request that the town administrator estimate the cost and a source of funding for the hiring of a diversity liaison in the diversity office to perform various responsibilities related to the work of the PCAC and other work of the diversity office that have been placed on it by various town meetings. As we know, every town meeting has another task for the diversity office. So we're asking for uh, the town administrator to begin the process of of seeing, you know, how and when we can hire such an off, such a, such a person. Um, and the way I, I phrase this, uh, reflects the stat, the fact that, you know, the select board can't just um, approve expenditures like that. It has to go through, uh, the town administrator who puts together his budget. Um, and, you know, goes through the the whole process of of identifying the cost source for the uh, um, funds for the expenditure, and then finally presenting something to the select board that, uh, you know, we can vote on. So, uh, the third thing on on this slide is a that the select board not agree to or authorize a police union contract provision that would limit the ability of the town to impose discipline on officers for misconduct, or that would impose onerous and non-transparent procedures before discipline can be imposed. And I want to be careful about that. Uh, we're not suggesting that the PCAC would have uh, any role in the negotiating process. I mean, that's something that's our responsibility. Uh, but in in the deliberations of the PCAC, uh, they will uh, come across items that, you know, uh, would be part of the negotiations or that are just in the ether around policing around the country. And that impact fair and and equitable policing. Uh, so, you know, they would want to have some role in that. And the Accountability Subcommittee felt that it was important to make the statement that provisions such as those listed there, the select word should not, um, um, you know, agree to in any contracts coming up. Of course, the select board has its own, uh, you know, opinions, but that that's something that the committee thought was important. Um, and that, uh, finally, for the Accountability Subcommittee, that we approve the continuation of its work uh, in order to, among other things, complete the civilian complaint po, uh, policy revision, which is way more difficult than I think a lot of people realize. Uh, there was not the agreement in the deliberations of the subcommittee. Uh, and we didn't get it done by the end of the process, so we want to continue that work, which is very important. Um, but I can't, I can't emphasize more. It's very, very complicated and difficult. Uh, so that, you know, that's the final um, recommendation of the Accountability Subcommittee. Next, the Civil Rights Militarization Mass Events Committee. Now, let me just warn you that the report of this committee is huge, but it's incredibly important. Um, Paul Ye, uh, put together a a mountain of data uh, from the police department and and other sources on issues and came up with these recommendations. Uh, you know, it's worth it to to struggle through that long report because it's it's a goldmine of information. Um, but I I do want to warn you that there's just a lot of information there. Uh, the first recommendation is that the select board support the police department's goal of automating the entry of data from citations issued for moving violations so that the police department can easily and efficiently provide vehicle stop data uh, to internal data analysis, analysis, now analyst for internal police purposes and for for the PCAC uh, so that they can monitor and measure disparities. Of course, this is tied together with the need for a benchmark uh, study, but, you know, uh, you know, there there are a lot of issues in terms of software that that are being used and in terms of information that is not uh, put on computers that had to be manually um, put together in 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 spreadsheets in order for the committee to review. Uh, very inefficient way of doing things. Um, and the cost of that is to be determined, and it depends on, you know, the availability of software to automate the And it depends on, you know, the availability of software to automate the data capture and the timing, in fact, of the state's rollout of its electronic citation initiative. And of course, any cost would more than likely require additional staff hours. Thirdly, or secondly, the select board requests back Devon. No, back one more. Okay. Okay, yeah, right there, stop. Stop. The select board requests of the town administrator, again, estimate the cost and a source of funding for the hiring of additional analytical staff in the police department to focus on traffic analysis and present budget recommendations when the town budget permits. This is important because we, the police department gets a lot of requests from citizens regarding various traffic issues, speeding along streets and, and other things. And you know, we really don't have the analytical staff to really begin to to understand that and, and address it in, in a, in a most efficient way. And the work of the civil rights subcommittee sort of found that problem in its, in its review of the data. Now you can go to the next slide Devon. Similarly, we also recommend that the town administrator estimate the cost and a source of funding in the appropriate fiscal year to obtain a accurate benchmark study, which would enable the PCAC and the police department to identify disparities in, in vehicle stops. This is incredibly important issue. And you, we really can't do anything except guess or assume that there, there are racial disparities and work through our training to reduce them without a, a good benchmark. And, you know, there are different types of benchmarks. The transportation department offered a, a study of traffic coming into Brookline from various streets that was used, that, that the subcommittee looked at. We didn't find that that was a very valid benchmark because it was traffic coming in during rush hour periods. And, and the, the relevant periods for, where this analysis is, other than rush hour, it's probably a lot of evening hours. So, you know, we're looking for what type of study would be a valid and useful benchmark. It's not an easy process. You know, there are winds, there's this windshield study that was done at one time here in Brookline during daytime hours. You know, it's, it's out of date, of course. And, and also, you know, it's not clear that the, the findings, you know, were as accurate as or valid as, as they should be. So, we're talking, we're suggesting that the, the town consider either a possibly $40,000 windshield study where we have people standing at nighttime, probably as, as well as other times of the day at various intersections and just count the cars and, and estimate or guess, you know, the racial identity of the people in the car. So that we have a sense of, you know, how many people of color, for example, are traveling through Brookline and can compare the, the the police stops of people of color to that benchmark. Another possible benchmark that may be useful, depending on how many car crashes we have, is a car crash data benchmark. Because that gives you an accurate view of who's coming through town. Because everyone gets into accidents, I guess. And, you know, that could be a better way of, of developing a benchmark. We tried that once before. Unfortunately, the year that this was tried, there weren't enough accidents in Brookline to make it to, you know, provide a valid benchmark. So, um, next, the, the civil rights subcommittee recommends that the select board request that the police department, working with town council, draft a policy for the select board to issue that require, that would require any outside law enforcement officer to conspicuously display at all times a clearly identifiable badge, patch or department name on the outermost part of any clothing, uniform or gear equipment to enable any person to ascertain the identity of the officer. Of course, everyone knows this comes out of the June, it was a June incident at, in front of the library where there were Norfolk County sheriff's officers in the, in the town garage who were a little scary, but more to the point here. Their gear covered up who they were. And so people, you know, had no idea who these people were. And it was very troubling, very problematic. So, this is, this is actually a small item, but it's an important item. You know, that the committee has identified as, as necessary. Next slide Devon. Okay, you know, there are other recommendations that, that the committee, that the civil rights committee had that are, are going to be taken up by the PCAC, assuming the, the board adopts or establishes it. And they, we go into it in greater detail in the report. I didn't, didn't want to spend a huge amount of time on that during the, during this presentation. So, next, community outreach, youth and non-traditional roles. First recommendation is that, again, select board request that the town administrator estimate the cost and a source, a source of funding for a new staff person in the Department of Public Health and Human Services to coordinate homeless issues and perform some of the tasks outlined in the subcommittee report with respect to homelessness. And we'll get to that in, in just a second. Homelessness task force that this subcommittee actually put in place. But that would require a part-time or full-time staff person. And it'll enable that staff person to take over some of the work that is being done by the police department in, in, in addressing homelessness issues that come up in the town. We don't have a huge homeless population, but the people who are homeless that need assistance. And the only people around 24/7 are the police department. And sometimes we need the police department to, to, to respond. But many times, you know, there may be other ways to address the issues that come up. And you may want to ask Casey Hatchett, you know, what some of those issues are. Because it's actually pretty interesting. And, you know, let me sort of go back to something that I may have skimmed over earlier. The, this subcommittee actually established a homelessness task force. And all that really meant was that the police department and the other town agencies that they typically work with have asked additional town agencies and private entities, as well as, for example, one of the constables and the Veterans Affairs Office to work with them on homelessness issues. So that, you know, there are more resources and more brain power addressed to the issues that homelessness, the homelessness population presents to the town. And, and, you know, this task force could, you know, be more effective than even the police department has been in making sure that, for example, on a huge, a very cold day like today, instead of Sergeant Amendola going out and, and checking on the homeless population, making sure they have, I mean, gloves, making sure they have, you know, other things to ensure their safety or, or to help them get shelter. That may be something that, well, Sergeant Amendola is very, very good at. You know, could be better handled by someone in the Department of Health and Human Services than someone in the police department. So, you know, that, that would be, you know, one of the role, one of the ways that the, the homelessness task force would, 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 would operate. Another thing, you know, you wonder why you have a, why you have a constable, another police agent in, on this homelessness subcommittee or homelessness task force. I think that's kind of interesting because one of the things that constables do is they evict people. That's just their job. It's not that they're mean people. It's just that, you know, their role is to file eviction notices. So, having a, a constable on the task force, the, the few times that the constable is evicting someone from their home, who may then become homeless, that person can warn the homelessness task force of this situation. And they can sort of mobilize forces and resources in order to provide a safety net for that person. So, they don't end up on the street homeless. So, you know, I'm really excited about this homelessness task force. And, you know, you'll hear a lot more about it, it going forward. So, okay, here are a couple somewhat controversial. There'll be issues that the reform committee and the task force on reimagining policing will be presenting alternative or, or different proposals for. And, and the select board is just going to have to decide. And it's going to be important that you carefully review the, the reports of both the reform committee and the task force to, to make sure you understand you know, where our respective and different proposals originate. You know, this, if, if nowhere else, you need to make sure you read the, the reports in this, these areas. So, the, this subcommittee, community outreach is recommending that the select board affirm the value and support the continuation of the school resource officer program in the schools as modified by actions proposed in the subcommittee report. So, they're proposing a number of things such as revisions to the memorandum of agreement, getting more transparency with respect to that, more involvement of different parts of the school, community, et cetera. Some of which are actually, we, we stole from the task force. They were good ideas and, and we want to, you know, use them. So, I, my apologies for doing that. But, you know, we're all, you know, out for the same purpose or same goals. And when the task force comes up with, with, with good ideas, I think it's appropriate for us to use them. And that's, you know, in, in the report, of course. And similarly, the select, the recommendation of the, this subcommittee is that the select board affirm the value and support the continuation of the walk and talk program at Brookline Housing Authority facilities as modified again by actions proposed by the subcommittee committee report. I'd like to just add something here. You know, if the walk and talk officers disappear from Brookline housing projects, that doesn't mean police will disappear. It'll just be police who don't know people in, in the, in the housing facilities. And they won't have the type of relationships that, you know, help the police department solve crimes or prevent crimes or facilitate you know, better outcomes for kids who do, or youth who do youth things and get in trouble that, you know, the walk and talk officers can help them get out of and, and avoid getting into that police or school to prison pipeline. So, you know, it's important that you really give some thought to to those proposals of the, of the subcommittee. Next, that the select, select board authorized the town administrator to terminate payments made by the housing authority to the police department for walk and talk services provided to the residents of the housing authority. Now, you know, these payments at $15,000 originated were originally paid from a grant that was obtained. And after the grant expired, for some reason, the housing authority just continued making the payments. Maybe Casey Hatchett knows, you know, some background to that. I, I don't know exactly why that happened, but it happened. And we're, we're recommending that the town just absorb those costs. I mean, it makes no sense to have the housing authority do that. It's a way that the town could, you know, support the housing authority. And it's, it's such a small amount for the town that, you know, we think that it should, should be done. Secondly, on this slide, that the select board has sent to the continuation of the subcommittee's work so that we can complete data, complete, complete work on a data collection, set up focus groups and, and surveys at the teen center and other tasks. So, we, the, the subcommittee did a very useful survey of all the residents of Brookline Housing Authority buildings, including seniors. We got a good response, I think about 9%. But, you know, it was, it was skewed towards older residents and, and was otherwise, you know, not as helpful as, as it could have. It was very helpful, but not as helpful as it could have been. So, what we want to do is continue what we've already begun. And that is following up with, with outreach to teens, you know, at the teen center and elsewhere. Follow up with more focus group type sessions with individuals in the, in the you know, responded to the survey and indicated they'd like to talk to us, give us more detailed information on their, their experiences and their views. Those, those people, as I understand, were, you know, mostly in favor of the walk and talk program. There is at least one who is opposed to the walk and talk program. But in, in all cases, we want to know, you know, more details of, you know, what their experiences were and why they're, why they have the opinions that they have. So, that is something that, you know, requires the continuation of the committee. And, and we're just asking that the board assent to the continuation. It, it almost has a courtesy to the board. I don't think we really, you know, need a board assent. But, you know, we, we would, would like to have, have that. And then also continuation to oversee and give guidance to the homelessness task force and the staff person in the Department of Public Health and Human Services. I mean, that's a little thing, but I think the subcommittee would like to just, you know, provide our, sort of outside expertise as, as a homelessness task force gets, gets going. Because, you know, we, we, we consider the homelessness issue and, and, and the struggles and risks that our homeless population faces, something that is very important for us to, to do as much as we can to fix. So, we'd like to continue doing that as a subcommittee. Again, no cost, but we'll go back Devon. Now, let's see, that, that continuation of subcommittee's work to work on data collection would require staff time of Caitlin Starr, an incredible staff support person who's been helping us with the data analysis for, for that survey. And I, I sort of guesstimated that's one fifth time of Caitlin for approximately four to six weeks. I'm sure it's much less than that, but just put that in so that people have a sense of, you know, what the cost of, of this would be. And of course, the cost to terminate the payments by BHA, the police department would be $15,000. Okay, next. So, next, mental health and substance use disorder. I want to mention substance use as opposed to substance abuse or substance misuse. I use that, that term because that's from the Diagnostic and Assistive Manual of the American Psychological Association. And it's, it's really designed to sort of de, or take away some of the stigma, de-stigmatize substance use, which is, you know, for the most part, a disease. And, you know, we, we treat it as disease here in Brookline and, and the police department and Department of Public Health. But it's important that we, we recognize it as a disease so that we can provide the type of help that people need. So, the next recommendation, or the first recommendation of the mental health and substance use disorder subcommittee is that the select board, us, requests that requests that the town administrator estimate the cost and a source of funds for the training of all new BP uh um police department officers in crisis intervention team training. Um, and all new dispatchers in mental health first aid. You know, we talk about how one hundred percent of the B uh the police officers are CIT trained. Um, and that one hundred percent of dispatchers are first aid, mental health first aid trained, man, we brag brag about that, but the fact of the matter is, is that we got a grant to pay for that, and that grant's gonna run out. So we are recommending that when that grant does run out, and and I don't know offhand when when that will be, that um the town view this as important enough to uh take up and and pay for the funding of um providing that training to all the officers and all the dispatchers. Uh, next, uh that the select board requests that the town administrator estimate the cost and a source of funds uh for two social workers for the uh police department and present to the select board a budget recommendation for approval uh when uh that is uh becomes necessary. Now um, you know, we have one social worker in the police department. She is grant funded. Uh, she's she's invaluable. She's an incredible resource uh for the the police department and the town. Uh, her grant's gonna run out at some time, and when it does, um, we think that the town really uh must uh pick up that funding. Um, and uh the subcommittee is also recommending that uh we uh we hire an additional uh social worker. Uh, you know, because there's so much work uh that that uh the current uh social worker, Annabelle Lane, does. Um, and is so valuable to the community, particularly uh people in mental health or substance abuse crises uh in the middle of the night. Um, you know, she may not be there in the middle of the night with the police, but uh follow up the next day is done by her, and that that's what provides a road out of these crises for people who are suffering from mental illness or uh from the disease of substance uh uh use. Uh, so, you know, that that's that uh proposal, and you know, of course, the cost is uh the cost of Annabelle Lane, you know, once her grant runs out, and the cost of an additional social worker uh once, you know, unless we can get uh grant funding for for both of them. But uh, you know, we recognize that that's not gonna be something in the, may not be something in the fiscal year twenty-two budget, but it has to be on our radar screen because the work that uh uh social workers do uh in 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 this context is uh absolutely in absolutely invaluable, absolutely important. Um, next, uh that the select board reach out to the towns state representatives and our senator to advocate for legislation that requires private insurers to pay for emergency services for mental health evaluations and legislation that supports expansion of walk-in urgent mental health uh services. Um, you know, ma- many times people fall through the cracks because uh their insurance uh refuses to pay for um mental health services uh that are provided, you know, on a crisis basis or emergency basis. Uh, so we're we're suggesting that the town um, you know, that the select board, uh, you know, communicate to our our state representatives um, who are very effective. We have some great uh state representatives and, of course, a great uh state senator. Uh, and I'm sure they can help us, you know, get something like this uh through, which is critically important uh in this area. So, next slide. Um. So thi- this is a little complicated one, and um, you know, maybe you can ask uh um, um, Elizabeth Childs, who's the chair of this committee, uh to go into this in more detail. So this request is that the select uh board requests that the appropriate town staff establish a um, mental health and substance use disorder working group of town staff and outside experts. Um, to be tasked with identifying and negotiating with a local health provider for a small twenty-four seven mental health and substance abuse walk-in crisis center beds uh that are appropriate in size for Brookline's needs. Um, you know, Brookline doesn't need a huge clinic. Uh, but we do need a few beds. Um, and uh you know, we're proposing that we begin negotiations. Uh, the subcommittee uh members, you know, have a lot of ideas and think that this is something that can be done fairly uh quickly. But uh we need uh working group uh of town staff to uh begin uh talking to the appropriate people. And so that's for a uh inpatient uh uh sis- uh or or inpatient uh uh location with beds. Uh, the next recommendation is um uh similar to that, and we're asking that that this uh uh what I call mental health and substance use working group. Next slide, Devon. Uh, that this working group um also explore options with local private providers uh to ha- and I'm gonna use some some uh some terminology from mental health uh uh community. Um, bear with me. Um, I think it's fairly uh uh clear what 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 we're talking about here. Um, to explore options with local private providers to house wraparound outpatient services. So, okay, so we have inpatient um with uh the the beds, a few beds we're talking about in the previous recommendation. This is outpatient services. Uh, such as um programs for assertive community treatment, uh so-called PACT community support programs and intensive outpatient programs. These are programs that uh apparently are 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 structured in certain ways and um, you know, recognized as ways to deal with uh people having mental health or substance abuse crises uh in the community on an outpatient basis. Um, so, you know, that again, you know, that requires negotiations or discussions with uh local uh private uh agencies and uh members of the subcommittee uh felt that, you know, this is something that we can do and it'd be incredibly in the uh valuable service for uh Brookline. Enabling us to not have to depend on uh services uh that exist uh in Boston um or in Norfolk County, uh even which are even further away, uh that are very helpful and very useful for us uh uh right now, but it'd be more convenient and and uh better for the people in crisis that we have uh local uh facilities to to address these issues. Um, okay, next. Um, okay, here's the uh, here's the big one, um having to do with civil service. Um. And let me, you know, I phrase this in 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 a certain way so that uh, you know, we 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 were talking, we talk about going through a step-by-step process to get to um our our final um uh so uh result. So it says the that the town administrator first wa- or one weigh the pros and cons of leaving civil service as identified by the subcommittee. I mean, it's not a slam dunk that leaving civil service is 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 a great uh thing to do. Um, there may be uh uh things that uh we need to consider. Um, if we do leave civil service, such as, you know, what what are the the rules in terms of uh discipline? Uh, in terms of um, you know, uh other related things like that, that are now covered by civil service, and we have to uh address in terms of uh outside of civil service. Um, you know, civil service, you know, we see as as um creating problems uh for uh both the um uh recruitment of a diverse workforce as well as promotion of that diverse workforce. So, you know, we want to make sure that um we understand those cons. Uh, and uh if we were to go out of civil service, that we have ways to uh address uh those issues in a more effective uh way than civil service does. Secondly, uh and critically important, we learned from discussing um uh discussions with the municipalities that have left the civil service commission uh uh system. That uh is critically important that we begin discussions with the police and fire unions uh to identify, acknowledge their legitimate concerns and issues, because it will not work without their cooperation. Um, and uh, you know, they have a very legitimate role to play in in this uh decision. And we it behooves us to make sure we we understand uh their concerns. Thirdly, uh, of course, obtain the the assent of the select board. You know, we have to agree to that. Um, and uh, you know, that that will require that uh we really be brought up to speed with understanding uh the reason for wanting to uh leave civil service and and how uh a non-civil service uh police and fire department would work in terms of the variety of uh different issues. Uh, fourth, uh to actually begin the process of leaving civil service, and in our in our report uh we lay out, you know, the steps that have to be taken. And, yeah, they're not, you know, difficult steps, and I think that uh, given that we now have uh five uh incredibly um good uh state representatives and and senator, uh and given the uh different uh environment within which these questions would be asked. Um, you know, our our chances of being able to get out of civil service, if that's our desire uh are much, much greater than they were before. Uh, so, you know, I you know, the the fourth recommendation here is to begin the process uh with the understanding that uh, you know, uh the the actual uh way uh that civil service operates and the way that uh non-civil service um cities would be required to operate may be uh drastically changed by a report of the Commission on Civil Service um that was set up by the recent uh uh policing reform uh law that was passed or that was enacted on uh December thirtieth. So, you know, you that that report is due uh September thirtieth of um uh this year, uh and that may change the whole environment with each and within which we are uh discussing uh this issue. Uh, and that's related um back, uh Devon, not finished yet. Um, and um, you know, the uh next is or five is um, develop a clear pa- plan, whether we're in civil service or out, to ensure that um um, we uh address the issue of retention of 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 our workforce. Uh, mainly in the police department. I don't think we have as big a problem in the fire department, but, you know, we we have to be mindful of anything we do, how it affects the retention of uh both fire and police uh employees. Uh, finally, um, I suggest we have a Plan B option. Um, in case, you know, for whatever reason, uh we don't uh or we decide not to leave civil service or that leaving civil service requires us to do things that um uh aren't uh what we want to do. Um, we have a Plan B to seek uh home rule powers to change, uh for example, preferences for hiring and promotions uh or other applicable um matters if uh leaving, like I said, leaving civil service becomes uh more difficult or or less desirable. Uh, and uh um, you know, Plan B, uh hopefully, we won't need it, but uh if if we do, uh we need to plan for that in advance. And uh our Plan B in terms of home rule uh powers is uh much more likely to be um successful, given the new environment we're in, as well as uh, I think, uh, you know, the the state representatives we have which who are incredibly incredibly effective and and uh would really uh do a good job for us. Okay, I think this is the last slide, Devon, next. I hope it's the last slide, uh that the select board acknowledged the need to bring stability to the police department in a timely manner before hiring a new chief. And, you know, what we're talking about there is that uh we have a lot of openings. Uh, I think we have two or three uh deputy uh chief openings. We have an opening in the superintendent's uh position, uh and uh more than likely, uh Chief Morgan's not gonna come back to the uh superintendent's role. He he I I believe he may be uh more inclined to retire. Um. And uh, you know, we will, if if we move lieutenants up to the uh um, deputy positions, I will have openings in lieutenant ranks. Uh, you know, be filled to be filled by sergeants, and then we'll have openings in the sergeant's ranks. Uh, so we we really be need to begin thinking about filling those positions, because the the lack of those uh positions being filled means that there's not the leadership uh in 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 the various divisions that are needed to uh to ensure that the department runs efficiently um and and meets the standards that we have for the department. Um. And finally, that the select board addressed financial and other impediments to the retention of workers uh uh officers, um, and um, you know, incentives to uh help uh officers uh go through or seek promotions. Um, those are big issues that are highlighted in this survey that we took. Uh, but uh the the select commi- the subcommittee uh fa- found those to be a problem uh in their um review before the survey uh was actually uh issued. Um, and this will require uh investments in the place and the police department, maybe maybe to adjust base salary scales. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, you can't really compare salary scales between towns and and cities, because what goes into a base salary is different in in each municipality. Uh, we may require investment to address uh the issue of the Quinn bill. And um, you know, what whether uh we need to make uh the educational stipends uh and incentives that officers have under the Quinn bill, uh which has been changed, um, you know, more attractive just to and uh to 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 help with your attention. Um, you know, as it says, as it says here, retention is a high value, has is a high value return uh on our investments in recruiting, uh in training and acculturating uh officers to Brook the Brookline ethos. Um, and and uh if we lose them, uh that's a huge loss. I it's a huge loss actually out of our budget, because we have to replace those people and and that has cost. Um, so I think there actually may be another, okay, final slide. This is the final slide, I promise. Um. Oh, uh, we talked about this before. Uh, this shouldn't have been the last slide, but uh that's where it ended up being. Um, January sixth, we had an insurrection in this country, a dangerous insurrection. Um, and unfortunately, there were uh police, um, fire and military personnel uh active duty as well as retired, who actually participated in this illegal treasonous. Um, and and actually treason is a very specifically defined term. I think it applies here uh uh action. Um, in violation of their oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. But then I looked at uh the oath that uh our police department uh uses and that many police departments throughout the Commonwealth, and that is even in the statutes. It's a it's a oath that requires the uh police to swear and uh swear allegiance to the Constitution of the Commonwealth. Um, I think that's a huge gaping hole uh in the in the oath and and um proposing that it be uh filled by the recommendation that the police um department prepare an amendment to its policy manual that requires a uh officer swear an oath to the Constitution of the United States. And that amendment that would be submitted to the select board for our approval, so it's an issue, it's a regulation issued by the select board. Um, right now, I think it's very informally done as as just something that uh the clerk's office uh uses when they come over to square in uh a new officer. So we need to make that uh uh more formal. Uh, so that's uh my presentation. Uh, if people have uh questions, the uh subcommittee chairs are available to answer them. I apologize for the time it took, but there's a lot of work, as I'm sure uh Mister Mister Fernandez will uh will show in terms of uh his presentation, but uh that that that's the way it is. Sorry. Okay, any questions for uh the select board? Um, or the subcommittee um chairs? Yes, Heather.
Um, just a question about the survey that was done. Um, you know, how did you select a random sample? How was that conducted?
Yeah, uh, we we you we had the assistance of the police union and uh the um uh the assistant to the police chief, and every single employee of the police department was given the survey. And uh the police union encouraged their members to fill them out. Um, um. The uh administrative assistant to the chief encouraged uh non-sworn officers uh or non-sworn employees to fill out their um survey. So, you know, the result was ninety-five uh responses, and there may be more, but you know, as of four o'clock, there are ninety-five responses. which is a very large, significant percentage of the total workforce of the police department. Okay, no other questions. It's all yours, Raul.
Nancy is trying to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm muted. I have a comment and a suggestion. One is that tremendous amount of work, and I really want to thank you and your committee for this very interesting array of ideas and suggestions, recommendations. I think it's a lot to absorb in one evening. And I also would prefer I ask Mel for a hard copy because my printer won't handle it and and I'm old fashioned enough, unfortunately, to need to see it on a piece of paper and be able to mark it up and and, you know, highlight it and this and that. So and I would like that time to do that. I've read it, but I haven't I've read it online. And I don't think I read online as thoroughly as I do when I have a piece of paper in front of me. That just may be because I'm, you know, old fashioned, but that's just how I work. And I'm wondering, so I'm hoping that we can get both committee reports in that format, in the in the on the hard copy, so that we have a chance to go through and, you know, really think about them and mark them up and understand them better. So that that's my comment and thank you. And I'm sure I'm going to be thanking Raul too. I can see that both of you have very long reports. They look very interesting and you know, I really, I think it was a tremendous amount of work and effort and I appreciate it. And I know we all.
Yeah, by the way, I'll say that some committees of the Reform Committee sat in on meetings of the task force. We learned a lot, and that's reflected in some of our recommendations. And we appreciate the hard work that was done by that committee. I think the idea of giving select board hard copies is probably a good idea, probably in at least in terms of my report, the actual report part, I I created a separate volume of documents, which is also voluminous for the for the appendices. And before people ask for that those documents in hard back, I I would ask that you just look to see if you you need everything that's in there. Awful lot of material, awful lot of material. And I see that Casey Hatchett is is here. Did you want to, one of our committee chairpersons?
If I if I can just, um, sorry, just to break in for a second, I do. I just want to be mindful that it's it's nine oh six and our report's going to take some time and I'm worried about losing folks who might be interested in learning more about our work, but if, you know.
That's that's a very valid point. I just noticed that all of our subcommittees are showing up on my screen. So it's not just Casey. So they're they're available. But I I agree that we should move on to the task force report. And people who have questions, do not hesitate to email the task force people or subcommittee chairs with those questions and and we'll make sure we get back to you on on those. Okay, Raul.
Great. Thank you so much, Bernard. Appreciate your work as well on this. So perfect. Thank you so much, Devon. We are set. I I am hopeful that all of our presenters have been have been promoted. And off we go. So first off, thank you, thank you, thank you to my colleagues on the select board for the opportunity to present the findings and unanimous recommendations of the task force to reimagine policing in Brookline. Tonight's presentation comes after six months of work, including weekly meetings of the full task force and our subcommittees and seven public hearings. In short, this moment has been a long time coming, so let's get started. It's important to first recognize why our task force is here in the first place. It's because of commitments made by our select board. When we voted to put up this Black Lives Matter banner last last June, and as the chair said then, this banner is intended to affirm our conviction that black lives matter and to proclaim our support for the aims of the movement to end police misconduct, to radically reform law enforcement organizations and the criminal justice system, and take steps to end racism and other forms of oppression. That commitment was reaffirmed almost two months later when we voted unanimously to create this task force to reimagine policing in Brookline. Of course, more context is needed. Without a doubt, there is a disturbing history of policing in America. From the days of the slave patrols until today, policing has been used to exert control over people of color, immigrants, and poor people. This history has been well chronicled and is critical to understanding the need for reimagining. As a primer, we encourage you to read this New Yorker piece, "The Invention of Police." More proximally, our task force was constituted as a direct result of the righteous, multiracial, multi-generational uprising demanding greater oversight and accountability of police. The uprising followed the killings of police by George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and so many other Black Latinx and Indigenous people. Those who have studied inequities in policing understand how even the best intentioned reforms, decade after decade, have failed to make policing safe, just, and equitable, especially for communities of color. The bottom line is that police reform has failed communities of color, time and again, with reform efforts alone showing only marginal impact at best. The current need for reimagining is not solely about what happened many years ago or thousands of miles away in Minneapolis or Louisville or Ferguson. This work necessarily focuses on policing right here in Brookline. It's also in response to the many discrimination complaints in Brookline, those that have been formally filed, and the many more that have been shared in other ways, including by two of Brookline's own now former Black police officers. We understand that there are many people in this community who have only had good experiences with the Brooklyn Police Department. But as one insightful commenter said at one of our public hearings, your experience, your good experience does not cancel out someone else's bad experience. There's a certain human tendency to believe that something isn't a problem for anyone because it hasn't been a problem for us. The eleven members of our task force do believe inequitable policing is a problem in Brookline, and we're not alone. We're joined by Brookline's Anyosa family, whose daily peaceful protests along Route Nine brought hundreds of residents to join them, and then hundreds more at protests across from the Brookline Police Department. We're joined by Brookline's Lexi Harriman, BHS students, and thousands of residents and neighbors who took to the streets peacefully to share their stories of local issues with policing right here in Brookline, demanding justice and accountability. For anyone who attended these events and others, like the Humanized Black Voices event led by young people on Cypress Field, the evidence is clear. Yes, there is a problem here. These voices cry out to us still, demanding that we take actions that match the scope of the problem and that that we present durable, meaningful solutions. And that's exactly what we will be presenting tonight. When I first proposed this task force, it was based on several key tenants. First, that a community holds the power to determine its own approach to community safety, which includes determining if and how police should be part of that approach. Second, that there are members of our community and those in neighboring communities for which Brookline's current model is simply not working, and that is unacceptable. Third, that police need to be held to the highest standards, and we need clear accountability measures for what happens when officers fail to live up to those standards. And finally, that this moment is an opportunity to rethink our relationship with police, yes, but also to reconsider how we invest in the long-term well-being of residents and neighbors. Following a month of debate, the select board approved this charge for the task force to explore and recommend new approaches to public safety and policing in Brookline, using a data-informed approach to interrogate our current model and ultimately providing a distinctly alternative approach to public safety. The board also approved this slate of task force members. I serve as chair. In addition to being a select board member, I also serve as the Associate Dean for Equity Diversity Inclusion at BU's Wheelock College of Education and Human Development. Bonnie Bastian is a town meeting member, an artist, a volunteer with the Massachusetts Bail Fund, and a member of Brookline for Racial Justice and Equity and Brookline Budget Justice. Malcolm Cawthorn is the MECO Coordinator at Brookline High School and a member of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. Almas Dosa is the Director of Home and Community-Based Services at the Mass Health Office of Long-Term Services and Supports, and a member of the Racial Justice Action Committee at First Parish, Brookline. Aton Hirsch is an Associate Professor of Political Science and Civic Studies at Tufts University, a data scientist, and a board member of Brookline for Everyone. Kimberly Richardson is a Judicial Secretary at the Roxbury Trial Court, a graduate student at BU School of Social Work, and a board member of Brookline for Racial Justice and Equity. Mike Sandman is the Chair of Brookline's Advisory Committee and a board member of SCORE Mentors. Kristen Singleton is the Director of Knowledge and Technological Services at Education Resources Resource Strategies, a national education nonprofit. Anne Weaver is a town meeting member and a licensed mental health counselor and an adjunct professor of counseling, victimology, and trauma and crisis intervention. Alexander Weinstein is a third-year law student at Boston University, a board member of the National Transgender Bar Association, and a legal intern in the Mass Attorney General's Office. Finally, Chi Chi Wu is a staff attorney at the National Consumer Law Center and a member of the Brookline and Asian American Family Network Steering Committee. I'm really proud that this group exceeded the criteria set forth by this board as outlined in our charge. A majority of us are people of color, including one Latinx, two Asian, and three Black members. Five are women and one transgender member on our on our task force as well. Immigrants and one Brookline Housing Authority resident are also included among our members. And as a group, we represent a wide variety of ages, identities, and experiences. I also want to thank the staff listed here, who attended nearly all of our weekly meetings for more than six months, have been deeply engaged and responsive throughout our work. With respect to process, as I mentioned, we've been holding weekly full task force meetings and also weekly meetings of our subcommittees. You'll hear from representatives of those subcommittees and a lot more about process in just a bit. First, I want to introduce one of our task force members and data scientist, Aton Hirsch, who led a partnership between our task force and Tufts University to survey residents about their views on policing in Brookline. Do pay close attention, because what you're about to see aligns well with the findings and recommendations of our subcommittees. And so, Aton, please take it away.
Okay, it's nice to be here with all of you. Thank you for having me participate in this. So this survey was the result of a of an opportunity that we had because my colleague at Tufts, political scientist Brian Schaffner, was engaging in a study of two communities, Medford and Somerville, surveying them just as we were getting off the ground. And we took a look at the survey questionnaire that Professor Schaffner developed and invited him to also conduct the same survey with Brookline. And so Professor Schaffner created all the questions and did the study, and I did all the analysis and wrote a report with respect to Brookline. Okay, so we these went out in the fall. We oversampled respondents who had a high probability of being non-white. We also oversampled residents of public housing. All in all, we received a 5.4% response rate, which is comparable with all surveys at this point that go to the the mass public. This first graph just shows overall satisfaction dissatisfaction with the police force by race. And what you see is that the majority of people who are white, Black, and Asian are either very or somewhat satisfied. Latinx residents show the highest rates of dissatisfaction, the lowest rates of satisfaction. African-American and Latino respondents were significantly more likely, about ten percentage points more likely, to say they experienced a negative interaction with the Brookline Police, and also significantly less likely to say they had a positive interaction with the Brookline Police. We asked respondents if the Brookline Police made them feel safe or unsafe. And what we found is that about 10% of white respondents said unsafe, 16% of Latino, and lower for African-Americans and Asian identifiers. When we asked, how would you say, how often would you say you worry about being the victim of police brutality? We see significantly higher rates among Black and Latino respondents. White and white respondents, obviously who make up the bulk of the of the community and the survey respondents, very rarely say they feel, very few of them say they feel like they might be a victim of police brutality, but it's quite common among especially African-American respondents. If you needed help, how comfortable would you feel calling the police? We have two-thirds of white and Asian respondents saying they feel very comfortable, but only about half of the Black and Latino respondents saying that, of course, these are all Brookline residents, saying they feel very comfortable contacting the Brookline Police. We asked how effective respondents thought the Brookline Police were at various roles. And there's widespread agreement that the Brookline Police is effective at ensuring public safety and fighting crime. However, the majority of respondents think that the Brookline Police is not effective at holding police officers accountable. When we asked about discrimination, whether folks felt discriminated against by the Brookline Police, again, not just by police in general, by the Brookline Police because of the race and ethnicity, we found that white respondents basically never say, or basically no white respondents say they feel discriminated on the basis of race, but that number is significantly higher for Black and Latino respondents. Also for gender, Black respondents are more than twice as likely to say that they feel discriminated against on the basis of gender. And as well, based on economic status, if you see the results here, you'll see that, again, it's very uncommon for respondents to feel discriminated against on the basis of economic status, but it's much more likely, six times more likely, for Black respondents to feel this way. We asked people of every race whether they think the Brooklyn Police treats white residents fairly. And very few, basically no respondents of any race thinks white residents here are treated unfairly. But we asked about Asian residents. We see now it's 10 to 20% of respondents of all races think the Brooklyn Police treats Asian residents unfairly. For Hispanic residents, it's 30 to 40, closer to 50%. And for Black residents, we see that people of all races in Brookline, including whites, Blacks, Latinos, and Asians, at fairly high rates, about half, believe that the Brookline Police does not treat Black residents fairly. We asked about a question about social workers, social service workers, in scenarios where a police department or social service agency could respond. What do respondents think is a better response? And what we found is that in in scenarios with, you know, that that appear armed or dangerous, most people think that just the police should be responding. But actually, in most of the roles that were asked about on a survey, including issues of intoxication or overdose, mental health crises, homelessness, and neighborly dispute, most people think that only social service workers should respond, not police at all. And and so again, that's true for most of the issues that we were asked that were asked about. There was the the survey asked about civilian review boards. The boards at some communities have that review actions of police and hear complaints of residents. Seventy-seven percent of respondents in Brookline thought that Brookline should have a civilian review board. And if we we asked what what roles or what powers that review board should have, we have widespread agreement among the public that those roles should, that that such a committee should be able to have investigative powers of excessive force or abuse allegations to investigate police shootings, to evaluate the police disciplinary process, to set policing priorities. These are two-thirds or more, two-thirds and close to 90% of respondents think that a review board should have those roles. Obviously, there are other roles like hiring officers that the public does not think such a committee should have power over. So here's just some rough conclusions here. Overall, the perceptions of the Brookline Police are positive, but they're at least positive among Black and Latino residents. Black and Latino residents are 15 times more likely to worry about police brutality than white respondents. They're they mostly feel safe but are less comfortable calling the police when in when in need compared to white and Asian respondents. Residents do not believe that police in Brookline are effective at holding officers accountable for their actions. Black residents in particular are much more likely than others to feel discriminated against by the police on the basis of race and also on the basis of economic status and gender. Thirty to 50% of Brookline residents of all races perceive that the Brookline Police treats Black and Latino residents unfairly. Brookline residents have a strong preference for social service workers responding rather than police in scenarios, including mental health crises, overdose, homelessness, and late neighborly disputes. Residents overwhelmingly believe overwhelmingly believe that Brookline should have an oversight board and believe that that board should be able to investigate police misconduct and excessive force, evaluate disciplinary procedures, and set police priorities. So that's it for my presentation, but I have a full report that I I filed and happy to, of course, take questions offline.
Thanks, Aton. So please check out the final report of the task force. For in our executive summary, you'll see some of these highlights, but the full report is in there, including links to all of the data, the raw data, so that you can see that data for yourself. You know, frankly, we didn't know going into. You know, frankly, we didn't know going into this what the results of the survey would be. I hope that it's as clear to you as it is to us that Brookline residents overwhelmingly favor increasing transparency, oversight, and accountability of policing while limiting the scope and powers of police. And also critically, that Brookline residents overwhelmingly favor a non-police response to social issues. In addition to analyzing this big data, we also engaged in an approach that we called Going Small, which was led by our Community Engagement Subcommittee. Here to talk about that important work is Task Force member Malcolm Cawthorn. Malcolm, take it away.
Hey, Raoul. You see the members, we already listed them, but it's Brian Rashiad, myself, Eitan Hirsch, Chi Chi Wu, and Kristen Singleton was our Chair for the Subcommittee. Not to read, but to sort of paraphrase here, you know, the idea is to really think of how to envision something new for Brookline as well as to increase community engagement. We were formed to assess those things. The charge of community is to ensure that the attitudes and perspectives of both residents, white residents as well as communities of color are thoughtfully included in recommendations and that we use a racial equity lens to analyze the current practices as well as provide recommendations for improvement. The Going Small Campaign was something we came up with because one of the things we really feared was that for many people who feel marginalized, they will not come to government things. That there's a fear of retribution and things of that nature, and so we decided to go small. So instead of asking citizens who really feel marginalized to come to us, we went to them in small groups. We started with organizations and individuals, in particular Bridge, Brooklyn Budget Justice, as well as individual residents in Brooklyn Housing. We also had discussions with current and former Brookline police, particularly Lieutenant Jennifer Passer, Officer David Pilgrim, and former Chief for Police Daniel O'Leary. We also had interviews with youth service providers, Alicia Adamson at the Teen Center, and Lee Jackson for Brooklyn Rec. Survey data shows there's a general satisfaction with Brookline police, and majority of respondents report real issues with transparency and racial discrimination. Each Subcommittee points to distinct things to add, remove, or make radical changes to its findings. The Brookline Police Community Engagement is done and evaluated without a community voice or lens to substantiate its success. We have five recommendations. The first is to implement a child-centric vision of public safety, which means putting our children first and thinking about what public safety means for them. That is at least zero to 18, if not from birth to 21. A public safety website that needs continuing work, if you look on the Brookline website, they only have fire and police as a part of their public safety. We want that to be broader, as well as when you look at the flow chart of things, it says it includes buildings, the building department, but that's not on the website when you go to public safety. We want in community engagement, not community policing, and what that's really about is often we hear about building relationships and building community. And then when we go to ask, we find out the community doesn't even know the police are doing it. And that's why we want to make sure we're eliminating unintended one-way relationships. Where the police go to create relationships, but the community is not feeling that. And the last is that Going Small, building trust through community conversations and working hard to build that trust. So eventually, citizens will come to us as opposed to being fearful of us as government institutions. Next slide, please, Devon. Thank you.
All right, Malcolm, thank you so much for that. Next up is our Departmental Analysis Subcommittee. And here to talk about their work is Task Force member Chi Chi Wu. Chi Chi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Raoul, and I actually want to start by thanking you, Raoul, because you've been an incredible chair for our task force, and I thought somebody should say a few words about, not only have you been a visionary in terms of forming this task force and a great leader and an organizer, but you've persisted in the face of actual death threats and not been deterred by them. And so, I really salute you for that persistence. And I also wanted to say, you know, that earlier conversation about civility. You know, I know there's a debate about whether, you know, civility is what we need or whether it's a way of suppressing dissent, but I really got to say, nobody came to your defense and said, when the police union attacked you and said, you know, that's, nobody chastised the police union for doing that and being uncivil. But yet you persisted, and I think the world of you. Okay, so, Departmental Analysis. Our members were Eitan Hirsch, who you've heard from, Select Board Member Fernandez, Mike Sandman, Chair of the Advisory Committee, and myself. Our charge was to engage in a high-level review of the structure and function of the police department, a 30,000-foot look. We ended up focusing on a process question. You know, how do we ensure that there's constant input, reevaluation, and oversight of the police department by the citizens of this town? We also looked at particular functions that might be restructured or reimagined, especially ones that weren't being covered by another Subcommittee such as Walk and Talk or School Resource Officer. And we ended up focusing on traffic enforcement. So the next slide. In terms of our process, we started off with looking at data comparing Brookline to a whole bunch of other communities. Really didn't come up with some solid conclusions, but you can see the results of that research in Appendix I of our Task Force Report, conducted a number of interviews, both with folks within the town, such as former Chief O'Leary and interim Chief Morgan, as well as city councilors from Cambridge, Massachusetts, and Berkeley, California that are also considering some of the, some of the things that we're considering and the ACLU of Massachusetts. And then we dove into a lot of data when it came to the issue of traffic enforcement. We received a presentation on traffic enforcement data by former Chief O'Leary and a presentation on traffic patterns by Transportation Minister Todd Corain, and you'll see those in detail in a little bit. So with respect to our findings, we, you know, we started off in terms of the process recommendations, thinking about what was necessary from a process perspective to ensure that there was innovation and evolution for the police department. How do we make sure that the police department innovates and stays on top of the times? But because of some things that went on with our task force, we quickly came to realize that we needed more than input. We needed oversight and accountability because there appeared to be a real resistance to criticism and change by the police department and several incidences that indicated the need for accountability, such as what I mentioned earlier about the police unions' verbal attacks on Dr. Fernandez, as well as an incident involving Walk and Talk unit members soliciting residents to give public comment at a Subcommittee hearing that wasn't meant to be a hearing and that was meant to be an interview and conversation with the officers and not the public. And, you know, I can't phrase it any better than my colleagues on the Walk and Talk Subcommittee, and I hope I'm not stealing their thunder, but, you know, in the written report, they noted how the BPD on many occasions has proven not to have the ability to hear criticism, particularly around race, or to hold themselves accountable via the current policy for investigation of citizens' complaints. And so, as a result of that, we think it's really important to have a layer of oversight over the police department to ensure that there is accountability. I mean, after all, the town is the one paying for the police department's budget. And, you know, while that is supposed to be technically the Select Board, you know, obviously, the Select Board has a lot on its plate and isn't able to sort of drill down to the level at which there would be the best and optimal oversight. And therefore, we, you'll see later on, one of the recommendations would be to have an oversight board, sort of like the Transportation Board that currently exists. And as Eitan Hirsch earlier noted, 77% of survey respondents supported having a civilian oversight board. In terms of the findings on traffic enforcement, we focused on traffic enforcement because frankly, that's one of the major ways that civilians have contact with the police. Over, I think over 50% of interactions between police and civilians have to do with traffic. And so, you know, looking at the data, we found that Black motorists were disproportionately more likely to be stopped by the Brookline policed and that motorists of color, particularly Asian Americans, were more likely to receive tickets. And I'm going to go through some of this data in detail because there's been some pushback and controversy over it. And then the last finding we had was that unfortunately, a significant barrier to reimagining traffic functions in the town is a state law that requires traffic citations to be issued by police officers. So, what are these statistics? So this is, the first step was, we simply noted that if you look at traffic citations from 2018, 2019, Black motorists in particular, 2019, 16.8%, 16.8% of the motorists who got citations were Black. In 2018, that was 18%. Even though Black motorists only make up, or Black citizens only make up 3.2% of the Brookline population. So, immediately the pushback was, well, you can't look at just the Brookline population because many of the motorists who go through town aren't residents of Brookline. And so, fair enough. The, so the next step was, all right, let's figure out who is driving through Brookline. And the other statistic was 84, 86% of the motorists stopped by the police in Brookline are non-residents. So, let's figure out who they are. So we asked Transportation Administrator Todd Corain to tell us who they are, and he provided us with this very insightful, informative map with color coding of where traffic comes from. The yellow circles indicate traffic coming from Alston and Brighton. The green circles indicate traffic coming from the western suburbs, Newton and further west, Natick, Framingham. And then the other two circles at the bottom are traffic from the southern suburbs, West Roxbury, and then going down to Dedham and Walpole. Those circles make up 69% of vehicles entering Brookline during the morning rush hour and 59% entering during the evening rush hour. And if you look at the statistics for each of those communities, they have populations of Black residents that are similarly not six, you know, not as high as 16.8 or 18%. So Alston, Brighton, you're talking about 6% Black, 4% Black. You know, Cambridge and Watertown, you know, 1.6% Black, 10.7% Black. And then from the western suburbs, southern suburbs, it ranges from 0.7% to 8.2%. So, you know, some stark racial disparities, some stark disparities there between who are the motorists going through Brookline during the evening rush hour and the morning rush hour, and who police stop. And, you know, listening to the earlier presentation, there was some criticism, oh, well, you know, most of the stops aren't during rush hour, so that's not fair. But the presentation about where traffic comes from during rush hour was supposed to be an indication of the population of motorists. Not to say the population of motorists that are, not to say this is when motorists are getting stopped, but to give an indicator of, is this disproportion enough? And unless you're saying that somehow the racial composition between rush hour and non-rush hour traffic is different, in other words, Black motorists are driving at a different time than white motorists or Asian motorists. I think Transportation Administrator Corain's presentation does give us a good indication of what the denominator is when we're trying to calculate, are there racial disparities or not? This, oh, sorry, Devon, can you go back one more slide? So this slide is a slide showing that when motorists are stopped, who gets tickets versus just a warning versus something more serious like arrest or a court hearing? And this is what I referred to as earlier, that you could see, for example, 2018, when white motorists were stopped, less than 10% of them got a ticket, whereas for East Asians, 15, 6% of them got a ticket, and South Asians, 13.3%. So it does seem that Asian motorists tend to get tickets more often when they are stopped. Next slide. So, in terms of our recommendations, with respect to process, our key recommendation is the formation of a civilian oversight board. As I mentioned earlier, this would be a board not just to deal with civilian complaints or a review of civilian review of police actions, although that would be a very important critical function, but it would also do things like reveal policies and procedures. Apparently, there's a 600 or 800-page policy manual that the police department has. Part of the oversight board's function would be to review and approve it, also approving things like mutual aid agreements and equipment procurement of controversial-type equipment like military gear. And then with respect to traffic enforcement, as I mentioned earlier, a major impediment to reimagining or restructuring traffic enforcement would be the fact that state law requires traffic citations to be given by police. So our task force, we, the recommendation would be to introduce a bill or to ask the legislature to introduce a bill or home rule petition permitting certain limited traffic functions to be fulfilled by civilians. We think at this point, the time for study is over. The data is pretty stark, and it indicates enough disparities that we should be taking action right now. We want to, you know, some folks have said, well, you know, how do you know that civilians who conduct traffic enforcement wouldn't have some sort of bias? Well, the difference would be they wouldn't be carrying a gun and a badge, and we would not take the risk of fatal encounters such as what happened to Philando Castile several years ago. So with that, those are our recommendations. And time for the next Subcommittee.
I'll take it from here. Chi Chi, thanks so much for this presentation and for your support. I do want to put one, a fine point on one piece of data here, and that is when we looked at speeding stops, and please check this out in our report, we looked at speeding stops, this is actually the number one reason that we stop people in Brookline is for speeding. And there were over, the numbers we looked at were over 1,000 stops for speeding. This is not looking through a windshield at night trying to figure out what the race of the driver is. This is, the stop has been made, and a determination has been made by the officer, for whatever reason, that this person has been speeding. And what we saw in terms of the disparities between citations and between a warning, between a ticket and a warning, is that when white motorists, who are the vast majority of motorists that are stopped, but when white motorists are stopped, less than one-third of them get a ticket. When Asian motorists are stopped, almost one-half of them get a ticket. And we see in nearly every category, if you're a white driver, you are much more likely to get off with a warning than if you're a driver of color. We've asked Chief Morgan, Chief O'Leary, to find some explanation for those data that aren't about race, that are about something else. And we haven't, no one's been able to come up with any reasonable explanation that doesn't involve race in some way. And so, this idea that there is no bias in traffic stops, we see it when the race of the person is theoretically known by the officer. Once the stop has already occurred, the idea that there's no bias in traffic stops, it just belies all of the data that exists everywhere. Everything that the ACLU and Rasan Hall presented to us and talked with us about sort of data, not just in Brookline but outside, we can't fix a problem unless we're willing to actually admit that there is a problem. And if we keep trying to find excuses for the issues that we have in policing, we're never going to, we're never going to solve those problems. Okay? So let's move on. Let's, you know, in addition to our 30,000-foot view of the department Chi Chi laid out, we also focused on certain programs, including the School Resource Officer, Walk and Talk Unit, and Mental Health Programs. Our approach to analyzing these programs included reflecting on a few key questions. First, is this program necessary? Does it fit within the scope of police duties? Do the benefits outweigh the costs, especially for communities of color? And could these resources be better spent elsewhere? I encourage you to keep. I encourage you to keep all of these questions in mind during the next three presentations. Uh, first up, uh, is Task Force Member Alexander Weinstein of the School Resource Officer Subcommittee. Alex, take it away.
Hi, everyone. So I'm here to talk with you about the SRO Subcommittee. Our members were Malcolm Cawthorn, Kristen Singleton, Kimberly Richardson, and myself. So for our process, uh, the major part of what we did is uncover the history of the SRO program. Um, and I'm not going to be able to cover it fully here, so I urge you to look, review our writing on the history of the SRO position in the report, there's a lot there, and it's pretty nuanced. We conducted a series of interviews, including with SRO Caitlin Caneely at the high school, and several teachers and staff at PSP schools, and had some meetings and consultation with town legal counsel. Our key findings were that the SRO program was instituted without public approval. There was no public process, it was very nearly, uh, under the cover of night, and the schools committee was never consulted. We also found there's no legal need to have SROs anymore. As of December twenty twenty, with the new policing accountability statute, Massachusetts law no longer requires an SRO. The primary benefit of the SRO position is to police and not to families. There's no evidence that SROs make students feel safer, and most parents don't know that police officers are in schools. Uh, in our survey, which Aton spoke about, there's a line that goes as follows, of parents with children in schools, fourteen percent report that law enforcement officers are stationed in the school, forty-seven percent say officers are not stationed in the school, and thirty-nine percent are not sure. Further, there's no public evaluation process for SROs or shared data of effectiveness with the schools. Our recommendation is to remove SROs from Brookline schools. This does not preclude other relationships with police, like school liaisons. But we would say that if Brookline is determined to keep the SRO position, it must be after engaging in an authentic reauthorization process prior to the start of the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school year. We need to land the plane, we need to land the plane so we can see whether we even needed to take off. If the town insists upon the SRO position, that insistence must be done through a rigorous public process. It cannot come solely from the select board, not after the profound lack of transparency surrounding the implementation of this position. And crucially, the SRO program should not exist until such time as that process has concluded. The point here is not so much transparency, which should be a given, especially after the clouded history surrounding the creation of the position, which is in our report. Has, the point is having a true public discussion about whether we need an SRO, why, and what form the position should take. We should note that this is a time-sensitive matter. There are conversations happening at the moment with students on their feelings about the SRO position, and we need to move quickly in order to be responsive to their concerns. That said, the firm position of our subcommittee after months of consideration is that Brookline should remove SROs from schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Alexander. Um, next up is Task Force Member Bonnie Bastian of the Walk and Talk Subcommittee. Bonnie, floor is yours.
Hey, everybody. Um, the members of the Walk and Talk Subcommittee were Kimberly Richardson, Anne Weaver, and myself. The Walk and Talk Program started in nineteen ninety-two by then Lieutenant Daniel O'Leary, Detective Mark Morgan, Chief Samard, and Brian Clunin, who was Executive Director of the BHA at the time, and Matthew Baroness, who is Assistant Director and Director of Management. It was the beginning of a shift toward a new community policing strategy in Brookline. The Subcommittee struggled to piece together the whole picture of the program's origins, objectives, and measurable benefits, because there are no contracts, there are no MOUs, no assessments, or written shared objectives between the BHA and the BPD anywhere. The gist is that in the, in the late nineteen eighties, there were many BHA residents cycling in and out of the criminal justice system. This was the era of the war on drugs. The Walk and Talk Program was meant to be a way to diffuse and divert the situation. It was also a way to build better relationships with BHA residents so that their interactions with police are not always bad, and to make residents feel comfortable alerting officers to potential, potential problems. The BPD states on their website that this is achieved by having a highly visible presence on BHA properties, uh, doing children's programming, cooking holiday dinners for residents, making themselves available to residents at all hours in case of emergency, and other things that are social services in nature. According to the Police Reform Committee survey of BHA residents, we know that there are residents that appreciate the program and use its services, but the majority of the residents that responded were largely white and over the age of fifty. Black and Latinx voices, particularly under the age of fifty, were not adequately represented in the survey results. In our Subcommittee's interviews and conversations with black BHA residents, former residents, and organizations that work closely with the BHA, with BHA residents, uh, we have learned that the program is also seen as a detriment. When police are placed in one particular neighborhood out of many with the objective of being highly visible in order to invite information from residents about possible problems in the community, it's understandable that anxiety can develop. Some residents have reported feeling that their children are being surveilled and that they are being policed in their own homes. Despite our many strategies, the Subcommittee had difficulty finding residents willing to speak with us or attend our public meetings. They expressed fear of losing their tendency for speaking to us about the police. And so our solution was to go small, as Malcolm discussed earlier. We reached out to individual residents to have anonymous, one-on-one conversations and transcribe the information without any identifying details. This extreme hesitancy to speak freely about their perspectives on police is itself evidence of the problematic nature of the Walk and Talk Program. Due to the long history of violence and oppression of black, brown, and poor people by police, it has been reported that police officers can trigger anxiety in these populations and an impulse to avoid interaction with officers, or act in a way that won't draw attention. This is not necessarily due to a particular officer's actions, but rather to a person's understanding of and experience with the institution of policing in the United States. In this context, when Brookline police officers provide the only access to resources that residents have in the middle of the night in a non-medical emergency, this creates a barrier for those uncomfortable with involving the police in non-police matters. When considering how to weigh the information we have received from residents about their experience with the program, we cannot use a majority wins measurement. The individuals that are expressing discomfort in their home with the Walk and Talk Program and fear of speaking out about it may be in the minority, but their experiences are not less important than those louder voices that feel comfortable expressing their satisfaction with the program. While we estimate that their numbers are smaller than those in favor of the program or indifferent, almost every person we spoke with that disliked the program was black. We need to pay particular attention when the people who feel uncomfortable or unsafe are black and brown residents whose population make up a small minority in Brookline. When those voices are drowned out, we uphold racist systems. The Walk and Talk Program is a part of a public safety strategy. Therefore, if some of the community feels unsafe because of the program itself, then it is not an appropriate public safety strategy, and we need another plan. So in closing, our findings are not based on whether or not the individual officers themselves are liked or disliked, but rather, we are examining the system and the environment the Walk and Talk Program creates. The central question to our work is, are police officers the best, or even the most logical professionals suited to providing social services and building personal relationships in a multiracial housing authority? And our answer is no. Police officers doing this work is a conflict of interest. And so we offer the following recommendations. In the short term, develop an effective, comprehensive, and easily accessible website that provides access to currently available social services and other resources, and centralizes the advocacy and visioning work toward a new community-driven public safety system. Second, center the people most affected by public safety challenges in the process to develop an improved system of public safety. We want to continue the community engagement work that we have begun, which is outlined in the Community Engagement and Envisioning Subcommittee Report. Our work does not end here, this is only the beginning. Our conversations now need to shift from the subject of the Walk and Talk Program to better understanding the challenges residents are experiencing, the opportunities already present, and the stakeholders that need to be centered in the conversation in order to envision new solutions and systems together. And third, we recommend that the Walk and Talk Program either be disbanded and replaced with a new system or phased out as other services and supports are developed alongside the Walk and Talk Program. Using the community input gathered in the community engagement and conversations previously described, we develop a new way forward to improve our system of public safety for all residents. Thank you.
Bonnie, thank you so much for that. Uh, next up is Task Force Member Anne Weaver for the Vulnerable People and People in Crisis Subcommittee. Anne, take it away.
Hi there. Um, let's see, so the Vulnerable People and People in Crisis Subcommittee members are all residents of Brookline with both personal and professional experience working with and supporting vulnerable people. Our backgrounds include clinical mental health care, can you go back one slide? We're, working with differently abled people, teaching, research, and the law. Next slide. The background for our Subcommittee, our mission was to focus on services and supports currently available to vulnerable people in Brookline who might be unhoused, have mental health issues, and/or have struggles with substance use. We wanted to learn what their unmet needs were and to recommend changes in our current model to both reduce barriers and more equitably meet their needs. Next slide. Our process. Our process included reviewing national and international articles that focused on best practices serving vulnerable people in the community. We interviewed members of the Brookline Police Department Crisis Intervention Team in order to learn about the CIT program training and what the gaps might be, if any, in providing this service. We also interviewed the Director of an organization in California called Mental Health First, which is an alternative to police crisis intervention, as well as we did an interview with senior staff at the Brooklyn Center for Community Mental Health to learn about current community services and areas of need. Finally, we interviewed the Director of Consulting for Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon. The Kahoots Model, which was established in nineteen eighty-nine, uses a non-police crisis support team as first responders for people in crisis, including unhoused people and people with mental health and substance use issues. Our interview with the Director for Kahoots focused on how the Kahoots Model works, the strengths and challenges of the model, operational costs and potential cost benefits for using the model, as well as possible implementation in Brookline. In addition to our research and our stakeholder interviews, we reviewed and included data analysis from the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Task Force Survey of Brookline Residents, which Aton Hirsch discussed earlier in our presentation. Finally, Subcommittee meetings often included public attendees' questions and feedback, and we had a public hearing with approximately twenty-six members of the public on February fourth. Next slide. Key findings. There is a clear need in Brookline for increased pre-crisis services, crisis services, and follow-up services for vulnerable people in Brookline. The development of such services must include the voices of those who are most directly impacted by the current lack of such services. According to the Task Force Survey and from public comments that we've heard, the community overwhelmingly supports replacing police-based social services with new models of support. In addition, a number of recently published, peer-reviewed research articles conclude that the CIT program that, um, the BPD does is not evidence-based regarding any changes in police officer behavior when they're in the field. Next slide. Recommendations. We have four recommendations. The first one is to continue our consultation with Kahoots. This program model has teams experienced in resolving crisis situations. Kahoots teams call for police less than one percent of the time, and they save money by divert, diverting people from EMS, the hospital system, and the criminal justice system. Next, we recommend implementing additional pre-crisis services and follow-up services in Brookline. The lack of such services was evident in our research findings, and we need to increase community-based services and supports in Brookline. Such services may include peer support specialists, case managers, mobile treatment teams, housing specialists, community drop-in centers, and vocational support services, just to name a few. Um, next recommendation, similar to the Walk and Talk recommendation, develop an effective, comprehensive, and easily accessible website to provide access to currently available social services in Brookline. Um, as well as having this platform, this website, we encourage the town to do ongoing community presentations on these new and existing services, so people learn about them in the community. And last but not least, form a social service department in Brookline to implement the recommendations one through three. We've concluded that the lack of such an agency in Brookline is a gaping hole in our town. This agency would coordinate existing services and partner with agencies to enable better communication across organizations, and as well as implementing our first three recommendations. Thank you.
Anne, thank you so much. Yeah, I do want to point out also, if you're looking for another model, there's an article recently on the, the Dallas Model, Dallas Star Program, which has been in effect for six months, supported by the police department, by the way, has responded to seven hundred and forty-eight incidents. None have required police or led to arrests or jail time. This is exactly what we're talking about, developing a model that would, that would, um, that would do that here.
Yeah, it's in Denver, it's the Denver.
Denver is what I meant, sorry.
And it was started by Kahoots.
Right. And so, here we go. So Anne, thank you so much, uh, for, and your Subcommittee for such forward-thinking work, and that is what we're recommending, Brookline, do move forward. As you've seen tonight, our Task Force, which conducted a robust, community-wide study, met with countless experts and residents over six months, and has held seven public hearings. This Task Force of Brookline residents, after a deep and thoughtful examination of the current state of affairs, is proposing a new way forward. We propose that the social service needs of Brookline residents in our schools and public housing and elsewhere should not be addressed by, by the police, but rather coordinated through a new social service agency. The focus of this agency will be to address both the symptoms as well as the root causes of inequity. The name Brookline Forward is, is merely a placeful, placeholder. Uh, Brookline Forward will provide Brookline residents with the services and supports they need to thrive. A new innovative Department of the Town of Brookline, Brookline Forward will partner with the Brooklyn Housing Authority, the Public Schools of Brookline, the Brookline Senior Center, and local social service agencies to deliver timely, critical services while conducting research, analyzing data, and implementing programs designed to counteract economic, health, and other inequities deeply rooted in racism, sexism, ageism, and other forms of oppression. And here's what it might look like. This agency, uh, will restructure and expand social services by bringing together existing offices under one umbrella, including the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, the Council on Aging, and the Office of Veteran Services. While a While establishing a new office, oh, just go back, sorry about that. Thank you. While establishing a new office addressing the needs for youth and family services, that's been well discussed tonight, as well as community-based crisis response, as we just heard, immigrant and refugee services, and economic equity. This new agency will also provide enhanced staff support to the Domestic Violence Roundtable, Commission for Women, Brookline Commission on Disability, and a new, we propose, Council on LGBTQIA Inclusion. Brookline Forward will also partner with other town departments as necessary to meet community needs. That includes working with Health and Human Services to develop a mental health incident response team, with the Building and Fire Departments to ensure residents are living in safe housing, and yes, with the Police Department on diversion efforts for youth. In addition to existing personnel, new staff at inception may include one administrator and three professional staff members, as well as a new commissioner to lead this department. Thank you to Mel Kletner and Melissa Goff for creating this chart and working with me to figure out the approximate structure and cost for this department. This is fluid, but wanted to give you some sense of exactly what it is that we're talking about here. We do estimate that most of the funding would come over from existing units like Diversity, Inclusion, Community Relations, and the Council on Aging that are being brought into this new department. And then an additional $539,419 would need to be shifted from elsewhere in the budget to really make this happen. The Task Force is recommending that those funds be shifted from the Police Department. So this is it, folks. Uh, none of this is pie in the sky. Uh, this is all possible if we want it and if the Board exercises the leadership necessary to get it done. It does mean reducing the scope of our police force, which as you clearly saw in our survey is overwhelmingly supported by residents of all backgrounds. It means shifting some funds away from police, and instead of spending those funds to address the symptoms of inequities, it means confronting inequities by investing those funds into the long-term well-being of our residents. Before I close, I just want to give an opportunity for Task Force member and Advisory Committee Chair Mike Sandman to say a few words about our work and the need for Brookline to take this approach. Mike, take it away.
Okay. So, uh, I don't have a slide. Let's just talk. Uh, let's step back from the details of the Task Force report. I've been told that some of my fellow Task Force members came with a preconceived set of ideas about policing, that they had radical plans to defund the police. That certainly wasn't true for me. I am not a progressive Democrat. I'm a recovering Republican. Nor did it turn out to be true of the Task Force as a whole. We did our work in the spirit of open inquiry. If the recommendations we developed through that inquiry do include some of the ideas that Task Force members already had about how policing in Brookline should be reimagined, well, perhaps those ideas are valid. Let's take an example. The Walk and Talk Program operates in the Brookline Housing Authority's properties and nowhere else. The officers love their work. They approach it with goodwill in their hearts. But the Task Force survey data that we gathered shows that minorities are very wary of interacting with or talking to us about, about police officers. The well-meaning effort of the Walk and Talk offices is viewed with suspicion. We may shake our heads in dismay, but it's a fact. Looking at this problem more broadly, police officers join up to protect the community and to enforce the law. But we're also asking them to provide social services. Given American history and experience, it's no surprise that the combination doesn't work very well. The Task Force recognizes that and therefore recommends combining the town's social services, including services delivered by the police under a single new department. There's a cost, yes, but we're spending now, money now on programs that don't serve the punitive beneficiaries well, no matter how well-intentioned those programs are. Whatever ideas individuals on the Task Force had when we started, our recommendations are based on thorough and thoughtful analysis of data. We know the recommendations can't be put in place overnight, but they are nonetheless valid, and we ask you to accept them with an open mind. Thank you.
Mike, thank you so much, and thanks for your contributions to this effort. As we wrap up, I also want to take a moment to acknowledge, um, yeah, the many activists and allies that created space for our Task Force to do its work, and also to all those who shared their time and insights during this process, including many members of the Police Department. I also want to express my tremendous gratitude to the volunteer members of this Task Force who gave their expertise, emotional energy, and countless hours of their time to this effort. Um, we, we are in your debt. Um, and as I've said before, we are Brookline, parents, grandparents, educators, students, lawyers, professors, and people who also want to live in a safe community, but without sacrificing the dignity and safety of our neighbors. We think there's a better way, and we hope you agree. So that's it. And, uh, one more slide. Oh, there we go. And we're, um, we're glad to answer any questions that you have. Thanks.
Bernard, you're muted.
Who, who muted me? Devin. Anyway. So let's start off with questions from the Select Board to both of the, uh, presenters. Uh, John.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to, uh, Raul. Thank you very much to Bernard. And thank you to all of the people who took part in both of these groups. Uh, very important work. Um, I do think it will lead to substantial, um, changes. My own personal preference is that those changes be worked out, um, cooperatively and collaboratively with people from the Police Department itself. I think that there's, um, many in the Police Department who are anxious to see the Police Department move into the policing of tomorrow. And I hope that will be the result of all of this work. I want to say something in particular, uh, if the, if the Task Force members will, uh, indulge me about the Task Force work, uh, because, uh, I, I'm sorry that it, in fact, rests so heavily on the survey that was done. Because, uh, I venture to say that there are some considerable questions that I think, uh, become evident if you look closely at the survey results themselves and compare them to the narrative that is presented as to what the survey shows us. The narrative is overwhelmingly, um, in the direction of, uh, that the people of Brookline overwhelmingly favor social workers to respond to situations over police for most responses that police currently now make. You'll hear that repeated time and again. And, uh, and yet, if Devin can help me with this, I took the liberty of actually setting aside a couple of pages, uh, slides, one that is in the report of the Task Force and reports the results of a survey question, the key survey question that keeps getting referenced over and over and over again. Pay close attention to this results page. This is the results page. And, uh, it says that, in fact, you know, in the, in the top two situations on the table, people want just the police to respond. Um, and then in the remaining, uh, categories on the table, people want just social service, except for domestic violence and abuse, to respond. Then there's this, um, what turns out to be kind of an odd column, uh, that says both. And, um, if the number seems small, then it surprises you that they're small. There's a reason. Uh, it surprised me to, to, to see this column. And yet I knew where it came from, because I thought back to when I answered the survey, and I thought, well, they didn't really give me the choice of both. But because I'm sort of a contrary person and, and stubborn, and I wanted to say both to just about every one of these, um, categories, I filled in two circles. Um, so Devin, if you'll move, keep in line now, the, the answers columns say just police or just social, social service, or both. Now here's the survey. Do you see a column that says both? No. You see what I saw, which caused me to decide, well, they didn't give me a choice of both, so I'll fill in two circles. And that's where I'm assuming, I can only assume, you get this both column in the results. Remember what the column said in the report of the results, just police and just social service. But that isn't what the survey says. The survey says, do you want the police to respond? The survey says, do you want social workers to respond? The survey doesn't give you the opportunity to say both, and the instructions above the circles says, indicate whether you think it would be better for police or social service workers to respond. No offer of both as an option. So there's two things wrong here. One is that the narrative in the Task Force report doesn't match what is actually the wording of the survey. The other is that the survey doesn't match Brookline's current array of services. In Brookline, police and social workers respond pretty generally to most, if not all, of these situations in one form or another. And so if the survey had been designed for Brookline, there would have been a both column. And I'm going to guess, but that's all I can do is guess, is that the overwhelming number of answers would be both. And yet we get the narrative coming out of the report that, that over and over and over says, the people of Brookline overwhelmingly prefer social service workers bond to the most situations, not police. But that just doesn't match the, the questions that were actually asked in the, in the survey, and the, the way that the, the reporting of the questions mismatched the actual questions. So, to, to sort of hang so much of the recommendations of the Task Force on a survey that contained within it a key question that was flawed, I think unfortunately just causes us to have to kind of figure out through different means, but not through the results of the survey, as to whether the recommendations of the Task Force, um, are good. And frankly, I think some of them are very good. And I think that especially the ones that overlap with the Reform Committee's work deserve extremely serious consideration. But, um, I, I, I would not hang, you know, those, those recommendations on this particular question in this particular survey.
All right. If I can respond briefly, I'd love to. Um, uh, first off, uh, you know, this, this particular, um, I don't know if this is a gotcha moment or exactly what's going on right now. You certainly, if, if you found a flaw, um, I wish, you know, you could have talked to us about it and sent a note to us about it and all, and given us an opportunity to take a look at it and see if there was something that should be done differently. I'm not quite sure why you didn't do that and why you didn't give us that opportunity, but let's go ahead and set that aside. This, I don't know how the, the both are not sure. Impact, first of all, us divining what people think in absence is a bad idea. Us thinking, you know, we think, I, I assume people would have done this if they had a different question. We just can't do that. That is not a thing we can do. You can look at the data we have, we can, we can, and by the way, we've got to take the good with the bad. The stuff that shows, you know, people overwhelmingly favor the Police Department with the stuff that shows that, that folks in communities of color are very distrustful, um, and concerned about the police. We, we've got to take the good with the bad when we take something like this. I don't think that, um, that one, one question on the survey discredits the work, discredits either the survey or the work of this Task Force, and, um, and that type of undermining of this work is, as I think is really unfair. Um, and especially in particular, without giving us an opportunity, um, to, to take a look at it. You know, obviously there was enough time to make a presentation about this tonight, but not to talk to us about it. So that smacks is, is just really unfair and, uh, you know, anyway. What was that, Bernard?
No, I, I, I think that's an unfair criticism. Um, but, you know, let John answer, not me.
Well, I'll make a brief answer, which is that I, I think unfortunately, this gets back to confirmation bias, which, um, I worry is, you know, is, is something that the, the Task Force that really, uh, ha- had throughout many of its meetings. I mean, and, and, you know, we know what the history is. I, you know, I was one of those people who thought that, you know, the best approach would be to have people from from various points of view in the spectrum about policing, so that they could test each other's ideas, test each other's findings, question, dig in. That wasn't the approach taken by the Task Force, and I think if there had been people on the Task Force who'd been more skeptical and asked tougher questions, the Task Force would have noticed that, wait a minute, there's a discrepancy between how we're narrating the result and what's actually in the survey.
Between, between now and, uh, the hearing and then the vote by the Select Board on the 30th, uh, I think, uh, you and, and I'm sure other people would should, uh, sort of flesh out, uh, uh, do an analysis of the survey along those lines, as well as the, uh, police survey that, that, uh, the Reform Committee did, and the, uh, survey of BHA. We all know the, uh, uh, problems with, uh, the survey we did of, of BHA, and we're trying to work on them. But, you know, I, I don't think, you know, we should get into back and forth on this right now, but, you know, you, you have identified some, um, areas where, uh, you know, you should help the Select Board and, and Raul should help the Select Board to understand these arcane, um, aspects of, uh, doing surveys, um, like this.
Well, we have our resident data scientist that can respond if, if, if he'd like. Um, I'll just, I'll just note, uh, with respect to presumption, I mean, in the, in the previous presentation, and, and I don't, the Chair mentioned that the Reform Committee started with a presumption that we have a very good Police Department. And I wonder if you would also fault them for that presumption as you've, you, um, I mean, I, I think you've also, um, made a lot of assumptions about the members of the Task Force and the presumptions that folk are going into it. I just, I, I don't exactly know what's going on here, but it doesn't feel like, um,
By the way, my presumption.
And actually, um, having a conversation about the findings of this Task Force, but, um, go ahead.
Wait, let's not get into a back and forth. My, my presumption, I think, is uniformly agreed to in, in, in this town, as well as, you know, throughout the Commonwealth. But, you know, that's neither here nor there.
Aithan, did you want to weigh in at all?
Good, but not perfect.
Okay.
Uh, I, I would, I would just say that, you know, I, I find the critique perplexing, and particularly the idea that one would throw out all of the work and the results in the survey that the community here, the taxpayers, paid for because he didn't like how something was phrased in a report. Seems quite bizarre to me. But as I mentioned to you, Mr. Ben Skoyak, in a direct message, I'd be happy to talk to you or other members of the Select Board about the findings, about the analysis, to rerun analyses. And, uh, I'm just trying to, you know, be here as a, as a helpful person as I can.
Thank you, Aithan.
Like the wording. I said the wording in, in the survey doesn't match, the survey question doesn't match the survey results table, and neither matches the narrative. That's all I said. I didn't say I didn't like the way it was done. I just pointed out that it doesn't match.
So, uh, other questions from the Select Board? Nancy.
You're muted, Nancy. Yeah, okay. Am I okay now? Uh, I think, uh, there's a magic unmute or some, a mute or somewhere. Maybe it's Devin, as Pramod said, but anyway. You know, I think both of the reports have some very good recommendations and some very interesting ideas. I, uh, wonder how, I mean, I think one of the things we've learned in recently in polls and, uh, and pollsters are telling us around the election, and, you know, be careful when you draw conclusions, like everyone, everyone in the Republican Party thinks X or, or, you know, X, just because you've got some voters saying Y, that doesn't mean everybody in the country. You have to be care, really careful. And I'm just wondering, both, in both the survey, both the, uh, reports, how many people did you actually survey? How many answered those surveys? When you say all of Brookline believes X, um, is that really? Can you really extrapolate that from, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, this last one we were talking about looked like it had, you know, I couldn't tell how many.
Aithan can respond to that.
Were in the survey.
Yeah, so there was something like close to fourteen hundred respondents. I would say that compared to any other mode of public input such as public hearings or public comment is by far the most representative form of public input that you could have because it was representative of the community on on, you know, race, on geography, on all that. Fourteen hundred people is quite, it was like thirteen sixty or something like that, was quite representative.
Three is the exact number.
Yeah, what I would also say is that for for any kind of research like this, you have to ask what the quantity of interest is. So for example, in, you know, in a vaccine, if something is ninety percent effective, but it kills ten percent of the people, we don't really care that it's ninety percent effective. And I think different people have perspectives on policing and perceptions of policing that are similar to this. It could be the case that most people, even the overwhelming majority are quite comfortable and feel safe and feel not discriminated against. But if ten or twenty percent feel discriminated against, then that's a huge problem. And other people might perceive that as not a huge problem. So it depends whether you're seeing it as, you know, what are you focused on? What the majority of a representative sample think? Or are you thinking about what's our standard of evaluation by which we might be really concerned that even a small minority have quite negative attitudes and experiences?
Was the were the were the results of the survey? Did those match the percentages in Brookline of the different groups of people?
Yeah, so I I talked about this a bit in the report, but yeah, I use, we use these, what we're called sampling weights so that, you know, on certain dimensions, you know, if, say, men respond more than women or white respondents respond more than African American respondents, we use weights to recalibrate all the analysis to the population percentages. And so all of the analysis that I showed was using those those kinds of weights. So that's sort of the standard procedure for a survey analysis.
As I say, I need a hard copy so I can sit down with it and read it and understand it better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the Reform Committee did a survey. We acknowledge the limitations of it and we're working to fix it. I would like to ask Casey Hatchet, who was sort of the quarterback for that survey of Brookline Housing Authority residents, if she has anything to add. No? Okay. Heather?
I I also have a couple of questions about the surveys, primarily for the task force. You know, I know that there's there's been a lot of, you know, press coverage over the past year, years even about policing. And I'm wondering if there was any way to account for people's perception being shaped by what they're seeing on the news in the survey?
That's a great question. I mean, I will reiterate that the survey was designed to, you know, basically work in different communities. So it wasn't specific about Brookline, but one thing that I liked about the design was for most of the questions asked specifically about the Brookline police. So it was, it wasn't getting at, you know, people's general perceptions about police. Many of these questions, you know, said, you know, at the top of the page, the Brookline police, the Brookline police. This, I think, was an attempt to address exactly this concern that we didn't want people to think about some national perception of police. And indeed, you know, it's just like, you know, you hate Congress, you like your member of Congress, you know, people have this general view that the the kind of the that, you know, you hate teachers, but you like your teachers, that kind of thing. So I think I think the way that the survey was constructed accommodates that. Of course, you're right, that it was surveyed in a particular moment of time and people's perceptions are informed by the news and all that. So I I don't know whether we, if we surveyed people in a year, whether they would feel the same way or differently. But that's what we got.
Yeah, I think that's legit. I think that's a legitimate point because most people in Brookline, including black people, have very little contact with the police. So you know, their view of the Brookline Police Department is going to be influenced by a lot of other things outside of Brookline. You know, what they see on the day, on the cable news daily. So.
Assumption.
Pardon me?
Is that fact or assumption?
What?
That black people don't have much connection to the police.
That's that's assumption. I don't, I haven't done any research on that. But people in general go through their lives and and, you know, you know, see the cop walking down the street, but you have little reason to interact with them or 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 get to know them. So.
Just think that's an assumption.
I said it was an assumption. Well, of course, it has to be an assumption.
Okay, I'm just wanting to make it clear because then you went on to say people don't have those things. So I'm just making clear whether you're speaking fact or assumption as a personal reference, as opposed to
Assumption and and and, you know, maybe a question as to whether that influences or would influence how people respond to a survey. I don't know. I just raised the question.
We actually do have survey evidence on that and it's in the report. So mo- most African Americans in Brookline who took the survey, but not most people of other races reported that, you know, a recent contact with the police.
That's very useful. Ann Weaver has her hand up.
Oh, great. Thank you. I was just typing that in. I just wanted to respond briefly to something that John said. Because what I heard John say is that our survey, our task force survey, which we can certainly sit here and and analyze how it was done and all the rest. I think it was done rather well, but I'm leaving that aside for now. I heard you say that our recommendations as a task force were predominantly influenced by the survey. And I would just like to push back on that a little bit. In the Vulnerable People and People in Crisis Subcommittee, when I presented tonight, I went through the list of different approaches we took to finding out about services and supports for in Brookline for people, vulnerable people and people in crisis, what the gaps were, et cetera. And the survey was only one small part of our findings of of what we used in our findings and our recommendations. And just to recap, we spent an inordinate inordinate amount of time reviewing national and international peer reviewed articles that focused on best practices serving vulnerable people in communities. We conducted four stakeholder interviews with different groups in Brookline as well as to learn about programs that are happening elsewhere in the United States. We had a lot of public comment and feedback throughout our task force meetings as well as in our public forum. And again, the, you know, I hear you saying that the survey was in somehow the main resource that we used to to make our recommendations. And I would say that's unfair and that's not true. So, thank you.
Mike Salmon has his hand up. And by the way, I'm not seeing a the hand raised symbol on my on my on my screen. So if you have a question, raise your hand manually.
Thank you very much. I I also want to respond to the comment that the survey, that we base so much of it on the survey. The traffic stop data had absolutely nothing, no relationship whatsoever to the survey. And in fact, as you may know, I'm former chair of the Transportation Board. And it was my question about, well, who's driving through Brookline that made us go and that that prompted us to go and talk to Todd Corrine to see what data we had. And when Todd came in with the data, it was, and you sat down and analyzed it, it was so convincing that people of color, drivers who are are people of color are treated differently than white drivers. It was, it's really, it's very, very hard to conclude anything else from that data. Not that wasn't survey, that's data that was collected by our transportation department matched up against data that came from our police department about traffic stops. So there, that's that's yet another example. And the Subcommittee that that brought Tim Tim Black from the Kahoots Program in Eugene, Oregon, that that program and the recommendation that stems from the interview with Tim, again, has nothing whatsoever to do with the survey. So it's it's really a conard to to claim that.
Okay, so let's move on to other questions. Any other questions?
If there are no other questions, I actually have an answer to Mike, but but I'll stand back until we decide if there are other questions.
Any other Subcommittee chairs would like to speak up? Okay, if not on in this meeting.
Wait a minute, what about me?
Okay, and John?
Yeah, I, Mike and I will will have some good discussions of this in the future, I'm sure, but the traffic data is included in what is called Appendix K of the report. And what what you will find in Appendix K is a bunch of tables that have to do with records of stops for speeding twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, combined twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. And as you heard Mike say, there is a, there is a gap between how the results come out when a white person is stopped versus Spanish, Latino, Middle Eastern, East Indian, black, Asian, Pacific Islander. If you look, you know, carefully at the numbers, a couple of things stand out that tend not to get emphasized when this part of the data is reported. First of all, the overall, I'm going to use just the twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen combined results. What happens when people are stopped is that overwhelmingly they are given warnings. That's all, warnings. There are literally zero, point ten percent, not ten percent, point ten percent, one tenth of a percent are arrested. Twenty nine percent, rounded off thirty percent overall are given civil infractions. Rounded off seventy percent are given a simple warning. Okay? So we're talking about the seventy percent group that get warnings. And the data for twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen show that among whites, it's seventy two percent. Okay, seventy two versus seventy overall, that's the discrepancy. Among Spanish and Latino, it's sixty six versus seventy overall. Okay? Among Middle Eastern, East Indian, it's sixty six versus seventy overall. Among a black, it's sixteen, it's actually rounded off at seventy. So it's the same as the overall. And among Asian Pacific Islander, it's sixty one versus seventy overall. So what we're talking about is the margin of if you were to correct this so that every single year the police give out the same percentage of warnings to every single group, you'd basically have to give like three percent less warnings to whites and four or five percent more warnings to blacks. This is warning being the lightest penalty in order for there to be perfect equality between the ticketing of everybody. There is, yeah, there is a discrepancy. But to portray it as some sort of overwhelming evidence of bias and ticketing, I think fails to recognize the the actual numbers we're working with here. And zero arrests. So do look at the is I I encourage everybody to, Appendix K.
What is the N?
So can I clarify? Because I wrote that part of the part, all of the traffic statistics are not in Appendix K. The most startling table showing the number of motorists who are stopped who are black comes from the year end reports, which aren't in Appendix K. And those are the ones that show very significant disparities that sixteen point eight percent of the motorists in twenty eighteen and eighteen percent in twenty nineteen, or I may have the years reversed, were black, even though there are three percent of the residents of Brookline and anywhere from a few percentage points, the maximum of ten percent from other communities surrounding. So those those are the the statistics I refer to when I say startling.
Okay. You know, the way the if I can just briefly, you know, just two things on this. One is you can't just wave away data because it doesn't fit your narrative. I mean, there's the 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 data that's that that I referenced earlier is right here in the report is clear as day. There there seem, there appears to be no other explanation for it. We've asked, it's not that we haven't asked, we've asked, there's please be no other explanation for it. And it's there. And so any other amount of citing other numbers and percentages doesn't will not simply erase the fact that these data exist and that they are provided by the police department. We didn't make up the numbers. We just looked at them. That's really all that happened. The second thing is, I think it's really important, what you mentioned about the fact that there are almost no arrests related to traffic stops. And that's important for this reason. Is that one of the reasons that that folks often cite the need to have police officers doing traffic enforcement is because get guns off the streets, find people with warrants, those kinds of things. And when you look at the data, it almost never happens. I mean, virtually, it might as well be zero. The the amount of of people we get with warrants or guns off the street or those kinds of things, it almost doesn't happen. So that's one of those those narratives that's often used to say, well, this is why police should be doing this work and not civilian personnel because there's some greater public, some greater public safety aim here or benefit of it. And that's one of the things we haven't seen. Now, of course, we're preempted by the state at this point from from moving to a civilian traffic enforcement body, but but we do think that that would be a good move in the future if we're able to maybe file home rule legislation or 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 request a change at the at the state level.
Okay, you know, from the Reform Committee's standpoint, no one's denying that there is disparities and, you know, based on bias and and police stops and field interrogations and and arrests. And that's that's assumed. And we're trying to figure out what is the precise nature of that. And that's why we talk about these benchmark studies.
The fact that we're both on the same page with that. Thank you.
No, I mean, why, why, I don't think anyone's off of that page. The the issue is therefore that, you know, assuming that, you know, there is that disparity, we don't have the exact scientific, you know, point or amount. Assuming that, what do we, what do we do in order to reduce disparity? What do we do in order to create conditions where there's no way to to have disparity? And, you know, the task force is suggesting change in the law so that non-police people can can give out traffic tickets now, you know, that they could be a bias also, but that's neither here nor there. Our approach is, and one of our approaches is through the Police Commissioner excuse me, Police Commissioner Advisory Committee, which, you know, would would have as one of his tasks to, you know, determine to extent possible, the extent of disparity and 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 engage or do the things in terms of training, assessment of the the efficacy of training and other things to reduce that bias. Now, you know, I, at least in my opinion, you're never going to eliminate bias. I mean, it's built into our genes. I mean, it's part of the evolutionary nature, evolutionary level to which the human species has reached at this point. But what we can do is reduce it and eliminate the impact or the bad impacts of biases and disparities. And that's what we're trying to do. Heather?
Did the task force find any evidence that when something is switched to a civilian enforcement, that bias is, I mean, not going to be eliminated, but reduced?
You know, our concern is about the the intersection of bias and and armed policing. And this is where, I mean, Chi Chi cited Philando Castile as one example of someone who was stopped and actually owned a gun with a license and told the officer that he had a gun in a state where you could have a gun and was shot and killed by an officer. That would not happen with unarmed personnel. And, you know, thankfully, Matt And, you know, thankfully, Massachusetts is a state where there are far fewer guns than in other places around around the country, although not none. But that's that's our, that's our large concern is that when we we see so often a lot of these these shootings that they are somehow connected to a traffic stop. And we're not talking about, what we're talking about here is the shootings of unarmed people over and over again. Or in the one case of Philando Castile, someone who had literally a license to have a gun and had no intention of hurting anybody. And so the, you know, that's what we're trying to prevent here. And I know that, you know, there, some folks, you know, say, well, that hasn't happened here. And therefore, you know, this is what we're trying to actually prevent from happening here. And so what I, what I would say, and and we could talk about traffic statistics all day. I think when you look at the totality of our report, that's a very small part of what it is that we're proposing. I would just like step back for a moment here. And what it is that the task force is proposing is a is a is a shift in how we engage with our community. And that shift is to to invest resources in non-police social services. And for all of the things that that that, by the way, no one is suggesting that we send social workers in to 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 stop a school, to stop a shooting at one of our, one of our houses of worship or somewhere. No one's suggesting that at all or inhibiting the ability for us to address issues like that on the rare occasions when they come up. And by the way, anyway, you know, not locally, right? But but no one's suggesting inhibiting any ability to address those kinds of issues. What we're talking about is the great sums of money and resources that are being spent addressing social services. If we were drawing it up today, folks, and we said, I said, I've got seven FTEs to address social services in Brookline, how many of you would say, let's put them all in the police department? How many of you would say, let's put them all in the police department? I bet not one of us would. That's what we're talking about, is saying, let's reset here. Let's let's figure out how we can actually invest resources in addressing the problems we have, you know, the the deeper issues that 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 are here in Brookline, rather than just constantly dealing with the symptoms of those problems. That's what we're talking about. And and I, you know, as you sort of, you know, as folks get a chance to sort of dig deeper into the report. And by the way, if you only have a little bit of time, we, the the executive summary is only 10 pages. And so as folks dig deeper into the report, though, I encourage you to have that frame of mind on. Like, we we address those issues like traffic enforcement because they, you know, the the data was there and we're working on those issues and we thought we might have something to say about it. That is such a small part of our report, frankly, and our work. And we'd love to dig more into that. I think the town should. But the bigger piece here, what we're asking the Select Board to do is to support a shift in direction here to really reset our approach to social services in Brookline in a way that's more effectively going to meet the needs of people in our community.
Okay, any further questions? Need further comments?
Well, I've got one more, if I might, and it's to sort of say, yes, you know, let's try to make use of the parts of the survey work that, you know, do not do not exhibit any kind of discrepancy between the wording of the question and the wording of the narrative. And let's not forget that the 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 very first report, the overall impetus part of the survey work basically came up with the finding that people in Brookline, white and non-white as well, have a pretty high level of satisfaction with the police. It's it's roughly 70% overall, you know. And if you look at the level of dissatisfaction with the police, one of the surprising results of the survey, which tends to get glossed over, is that African American respondents reported less dissatisfaction with the police than than any other group. And so a lot of the other findings in the report are not really congruent with the overall level of satisfaction finding in the report. In other words, if, you know, if you go by all of the reports of impressions, the impression that, you know, that that this group or that group is treated more unfairly, you know, or the impression that this group or that group has greater reason to fear. Those are impressions and they're very valid. No one's questioning those impressions. But they don't really match the overall level of satisfaction reported by people with the police overall. Across all groups, the the group that has the least satisfaction with police, and I think we really should talk more about this, is the Latinx group. You know, and 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 that is a finding that I think deserves a lot more attention than it's been getting at this point. But overall, white versus non-white, the level of dissatisfaction is, you know, 10 to 15% and the level of satisfaction is 60 to 70%.
Okay, let me let me just add one thing that I think is being sort of overlooked. And that is, you know, we talk about social services versus policing. You know, police would love to get out of some of the, what we call social service responsibilities they have. And that shows up in our survey of police. I mean, at least the preliminary data I looked at suggests that police don't like to be called for turkeys or, you know, noise bylaw violations and and things like that. Or unnecessary calls for substance abuse situations. But, you know, they are because they're the only ones out there 24/7. You know, people don't have drug crises, you know, during business hours. Typically, I don't think. Yes, I don't, Malcolm, I don't know. That's just my presumption. But, you know, the police are out there 24/7 when they do happen. And until we really have something in place to take over some of those functions, not all, some of them, it makes no sense to talk about diverting these social services out of the hands of the police. I mean, we had a town meeting back in the summer. We we had a situation where the end of the fiscal year was going to happen in 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 like a couple hours after after the town meeting. And we were talking about, or some people were talking about, ending programs that the police were involved with at 12:01 the next day, July 1st, without any any replacement for those services that that would enable someone who has a crisis or is or some other problem will have some way of not not, you know, being hurt or whatever. So, you know, let's think about this in terms of, not that anyone's really opposed to having social workers or other social service workers do some of the things that police are doing. But, you know, what are the practical steps to actually get in there? I think I saw Mike's hand up.
Yes, indeed, you did. Bernard, I I stood up on behalf of the Advisory Committee and opposed the motion to reduce the police budget.
I just use that as an example.
May 2019, because there was nothing else being put in place. We, this task force is recommending what should be put in place. And the whole focus of what we're, the whole thing we want, that we'd like you to focus on as the Select Board is, okay, if these things make sense, now let's start to put the alternatives in place. Let's find the additional $500,000. That's not a small amount of money, but it's not an overwhelming amount of money. And if the concept makes sense, let's get to work on it. Rather than just say, well, you have to have something else in place, you can do something about it. And that's what we're asking you to do.
Okay, and and our committee is suggesting that we have already a social service department. It's a health, Public Health and Human Services Department. Let's, you know, add a division there, add people there to to address some of these problems. And and we, you know, identified specific individuals that we'd like to see hired in order to, you know, give some or enable us to divert from police police work, you know, to social workers or or other social service employees, you know, some of these tasks, so.
I just want to add one other thing, and that's, um, thank you. I just want to add one other thing, and that's that the 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 idea that that there are people in our community who are who are who are unhappy with the Brookline police and that a a great number of those people are people of color, I'm sorry, it's not debatable. It's the reason we're here. That's why we're here. That's why these bodies were created. It wasn't to 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 reimagine policing in Minneapolis or to reform policing in Louisville. It was to do it in Brookline. And if, you know, I don't know if you if if you weren't at the Humanized Black Voices event and got to hear person after person at the person who live in Brookline and grew up in Brookline talk about their issues with policing in Brookline. I don't know if you got to stand out with us, with the Anyosa family, and hear about the many people in Brookline who had issues with police in Brookline. And I don't know if you got to be there for that wonderful, like, like just giant and peaceful march to the police department where people shared their stories of inequitable policing here in Brookline. And maybe you missed all that or didn't read the articles about it or or whatever. That's why we're here in the first place. I mean, the idea that we're going to now, month, six months later, even think about debating whether or not there are great many people here who are unhappy with the current system and that those people overwhelmingly happen to be people of color and low-income people. And by the way, some of I'm sorry.
Debating that.
Bernard, I I I think John knows, I'm talking to him, not you.
No, I don't know who you're talking to because I'm not debating it.
Okay, wait, let's not get into this back and forth like that.
Let me finish. I was interrupted. Please let me finish my statement and then you're welcome to disagree with it. The the idea that you're going to spend your time trying to pick apart pieces of of this survey to somehow try to prove that 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 nothing need be done, that certainly that nothing meaningful need be done, that nothing big need to be done here, that that we don't need to make this change and that that's how you want to use your position on the Select Board to actually to actually do that rather than to ask deeper questions about all the folks that have come forward in seven public hearings in a survey, in our in our one-on-one engagements that each and every Subcommittee engaged. The fact that you want to spend your time doing that rather than trying to figure out, like, like, what, like, what needs to be done so that those people, even if it's a small number in your mind, and by the way, I don't know what percentage of 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 racial bias you're willing to tolerate.
Okay, wait, let's talk, let's talk.
So
I mean, no, no one's suggesting that we don't do anything. The issue is, what do we do? I think that's
I'm sorry.
That's what I'd say.
I'm wrapping up. And John's, John's a big boy. He can defend himself if he liked to. The fact that we're spending time on that rather than try to figure out what we think about these, about these larger, these larger proposals that this board asked us to come up with. Literally in the charge, it says alternatives to policing. And the fact that you're saying now, wow, you know, police are the only answer here, is is
No one's saying that.
All right.
Heather, you had a question?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. It looked like your hand was up. Okay.
She was petting her cat.
Oh, it must have been the cat's tail. I thought that.
You know, I I know we'll have another opportunity to talk about this. And let's reset and like focus on the on the on the on the on the the proposals that we have before us. We haven't even talked about the proposals from the Reform Committee. Like, let's let's reset and the next time we do this, have a have more of an opportunity to focus on those proposals rather than, you know, I don't I don't plan on spending any of my time as a Select Board member, you know, in these meetings trying to to undermine a proposal. I'm gonna, if I have challenges to what the Reform Committee is doing, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna list those. But I'm not, you know, this idea of just trying to to pick this work apart bit by bit is is, as I don't think a particularly helpful way to go about finding a new path forward, which is what what communities members and set us set us out to do. So I'll
Elizabeth, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't.
Okay, sorry.
If you need, if you, but if you need me to answer.
No, I don't need anything. Okay, any any further discussion? If, I I see that Nancy said no, so I'll take that as the consensus here. Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate the discussion. And, you know, of course, the Select Board is going to have a hearing in two weeks. And between now and then, I'm sure that all the positions that people have been discussing tonight will be formulated into, you know, more precise statements or or comments. And then we'll have our votes on the 30th of March, where we will vote on various proposals of the two committees. So thank you, everyone, and good night.
Thanks, everybody.